Well, that's me reminding you.
Yeah.
My name.
I know.
And then hopefully it's considered.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
But probably more for my first love of local agriculture. It's kind of my main focus.
Nice.
No, I'm actually, I'm.
Owen Warren?
I get into full time farming.
Hmm? George?
No one, no one.
Who's orange? That's somebody who's orange.
Yeah. You got fifteen, nineteen. And that will soon increase. And I'm planning to do me a bird's in a couple of months. I got some land I've been working with and I have any other market. It's a, yeah.
I did.
This is the year of.
You?
Planning a lot of money.
What?
Making a lot, but it's a lot cheaper than buying land.
Okay.
It is true. I mean, anywhere, there's a lot of people who are willing to share their land. I just think it's important.
I know, we did, we went up there, did right there, went down, went up. The new little connector on Keith's deal goes down to Paddle. Down, no, just talking about down, I'm Terry. I'm the old person here. Am I need bikes good for calling me?
Yeah. Um. No.
Not yet. That's the next step, after this fight, that's the next one. You have more and more.
Yeah, you look for it, but.
My heart. There are more and more middle aged men riding around town on those little units. A lot of them ride right by my house.
Yes, yes.
You might know, wonder who it is.
I know what you mean.
Like the inventor, the second inventor after Tyler. Has he got one? In Leicester Park?
And it's pretty cool. They've got good ideas.
These riding trips.
And that's definitely big agenda items, sort of cooking up farmers with.
Oh, my good daughter.
You love it? How could I buy land, you know?
How much was that over two twenty eight? I'm gonna change your mom's. That was two twenty eight maybe. Curious going to ask how.
No, you could farm mushrooms probably on that acre and a half.
Yeah, I've got my computer out. Now, like two and a half days, I didn't even go for three.
You need to have things efficient, you need to have things.
What is the idea about penalizing?
Say that again, when?
Well, for, but you have to tell us the cost.
As in, when I go away for council? Well, normally I shouldn't have to, right? Because, but I'm gonna ask for council resolution tonight because it's like two hundred, what was different? Two fifty eight?
No, but that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Well, the policy says two hundred bucks a day, but such are, like three hundred bucks a day, more. If they work three days.
They've got VCS walking tractors with every implement that ever desire.
When we're away?
From haymaking to.
Because somebody has to cover. Even if you go on community business, they give you the time off without a leave. But they don't pay you stuff.
So that's, that's true.
But if you're not prepared, then my classroom can just rain free for days.
Yeah, exactly. Project.
Here, let me, uh.
Project B.
I'd like to call this meeting of the committee, the whole, to order. Need adoption, motion to adopt the agenda. Council Spear, instructed by Council Ross. Unfinished business, for street furniture for Columbia and Washington Street. Would like to start the discussion.
Yeah, I can hear that.
Council Ross.
Where were those council more?
I don't know where she went. She's gone.
Um, I'd like to start the discussion by asking for a response from staff regarding the discussion. I guess I started it around Council. But, um, just for a response from staff about the idea of, um, putting it out to the community for some sort of creative project.
For local contractors?
Yeah. Just that concept that was brought forward and what's the response from staff?
Darren, did you hear that question?
Yeah. You want me to?
Yeah, if you can ask, please.
Um, so just to make Council aware of, um, actually, some of the furnishings are made from, the ones, and I'm talking specifically to the ones that have been picked here in the, in the tender documents that you guys have all got copies of. So I phoned MIA to start with, which is our insurer, and asked, you know, do furnishings need to be made to CSA approval or ESTM, which is the American version of CSA? And they do not. Um, but they said that you are also taking on risk by putting out anything such as any item that is not made to a standard. You know, slivers, you know, things like that, that, you know, kids, in particular, can pick up from skating or boarding on them to, you know, various, various other reasons why people can fall off of certain things. So with saying that, um, I phoned the companies that we've got prices from, and some things for Council to consider are, all the furnishings, as far as the picnic tables, the benches, they come with a twenty five year warranty on rotting, splitting, cracking, cylindering, anything like that, which to public works is a huge benefit. Um, I don't know, everybody knows of all the heritage benches that we have out there, they are extremely high in maintenance because they need to be stained every so often, every two years it seems now. So they do take a lot of time to, to upkeep them. So I'd like Council to make sure that, you know, you consider your decision of, if you are considering something local, then we want to make sure that it is maintenance free. There are also a ten year warranty against, um, you know, the frame, the aluminum, the structural of them. And then, I don't know if you guys noticed the garbage can out here, the bear proof garbage can, I brought down one here for Council to have a look at and a employee out there. And if you just look at the mechanisms that's involved in those, these people have been doing this for, I think it's thirty five years or something like that. So they have a proven track record on the maintenance, on what works and what doesn't work. I think that we go to local, we just gotta be very careful of what we're asking them to build and making sure that it's there for the long term, not just for a number or short number of years. The other, I, I heard at the Council that we've talked about having maybe even just a, a couple of, uh, of pieces made by locals down on, down in the area. Look, this square would be an awesome spot, I think, with the, where the railcar was gonna go. I think if you guys wanted to showcase some local talent, I think that would be an excellent opportunity there. I, I mean, we did walk through last week, and I, I find it, these things, most of them gotta go in and out every year. So you've gotta, you know, unbolt them, bolt them, which is hard on, hard on tables if you're gonna get them locally made. I'm thinking if they were, you know, made out of wood structure, I'm not sure what you're thinking of, but just being able to, the mobility of them, it has to be there. So I'm happy to sit on a task force and, and discuss this, if that's what Council is willing to do. I just, when I brought it up with the, um, with the guys who do the installations in and out every year, you know, they, they share the same, the same opinion of a maintenance free because they are very high in maintenance and, you know, from their perspective, of course, the installation of, um, Springfield.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a follow up question? So what's the plan for the heritage benches? Will the heritage benches be replaced by some of these? Is that what the plan was? So the heritage benches stay where they are?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so, um, now how I envision this, I guess, I should explain. Um, I mean, the, the garbage cans and the recycling bins, if, you know, the city feels it's necessary to replace what we have, um, then, you know, find that is not something that I was thinking we would contract out and have built locally. So those ones aren't really the issue. Um, now I think that this, um, one hundred plus K is an exorbitant amount of money to send out to the community when it's, when we do have expertise here in town, um, to make this. I mean, you know, there's the idea of, okay, we make it, you know, a showcase piece and an actual, where artisans and, you know, showcase their creativity. There is that aspect that could potentially be a bonus, but I think, you know, even without that aspect, just having these built in our community, I think it just makes a lot more sense to me to be able to keep that money in town. Um, I do think that the issues brought up about, you know, maintenance and warranty and durability, those are issues that can be dealt with nonetheless, even if using local people because, you know, they're professionals, they deal with those issues in what they do regularly. Um, you know, it's about the quality of the work, work, I mean, the quality of the wood, quality of the, uh, I don't know, the, the joints, you know, and then it's, it's the stuff that they deal with. So, um, I think another bonus is that they would actually be local, and so when an issue does arise, they're here to deal with it. So that could actually be perceived as a bonus, I think. Um, we also have, you know, I mean, what we have here is, is fairly, I don't know, run of the mill more or less. I mean, there's nothing really particularly Rosland screaming of, of what's being presented here. And, um, I think if we did have somebody local doing it, we could even say, if this is what we're considering here, please, you know, come up with your version of this so that we don't have to, you know, if, if people are intimidated by the idea of, you know, then how do we make the decision? And there's a whole gamut of things that could come back to us. Well, we could still set specifications of here, this is what we're considering, please come back with your version of this. And so, you know, if it's already been vetted through design boards or all these other things that we have, you know, it should still take care of that, it would still be within our parameters. Um, so I, I would very much prefer still to put out an RFP to say, this is what we're considering, can you please, you know, give us a, a quote on what this would be? I do feel like it would be cheaper and better quality and thank you.
I'd like to.
No, go ahead.
Council Spear, you're, you're on the streetscape committee?
Yes, we've been a little idle for quite some time, yes, and we haven't had a meeting for.
No, when, when you're considering all this, did you consider local products or?
Well, you know, I'm of two minds, as usual. Um, you know, I, I think the concept of having local artisan crafted work downtown is a great idea. Um, I guess, you know, when you're looking at a scale of this size for this project and timelines, again, um, but first, well, first of all, you know, the scale of this project, when I look at the amount of street furniture that rocks you're gonna put downtown, including the bike racks and everything, but the street furniture, the benches and that, you know, it makes sense to me that you would go kinda to, you know, the, you know, efficiencies around ordering them from companies such as this. I mean, it just makes sense that, and I don't know cost wise, what, um, I mean, has anyone talked to anyone? How much would one of these benches cost in relation to what the costs are? And I don't even know if the costs are on here for the individual items, I haven't seen them.
I've got them if you need them.
Yeah, so Darren, what would say one of these typical, um, street benches, um, cost? A bench A, for example, with the back? Do you know?
Fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred.
For one bench?
Yep.
Sixteen hundred bucks?
Yep.
For one bench?
Uh huh.
Oh. And what are the, what is the, what are the actual materials of that bench as far as the wood goes?
There's no wood, there's no wood.
Oh, these are plastic.
It's all, it's all recycled plastic.
Right.
Which, that's, that's the twenty five year warranty, right?
Right, okay.
And that, in the suretts.
Yeah.
The ones that I was involved in, um, that was spoken very highly about not having, you know, something that's gonna not weather so well here.
Right, yeah, because of, well, everything, I, well, I guess we take them out in the winter so they don't have to endure that. And then the benches are the same, correct? What, what, what would a, sorry, picnic bench cost, or one of those picnic tables, sorry?
Two thousand.
Okay. So I, I guess part, I mean, there's many aspects to this, and I mean, it is typical furniture, there's no question it's typical furniture, but the downtown core itself is not typical, it's, it's unique to Rosland, it will be and, you know, is unique to Rosland, the design of it. Um, you know, I'm favorable to some pieces that are unique and from local artisans, but I'm also favorable to making sure that we have, um, a cohesive theme downtown and that it looks as professional as the actual streetscape as it is sitting out there right now. So, you know, I would mind like six pieces that are unique or something, but I, as far as the whole scheme of things, I, I can't even see how we would technically, how that would work as far as timelines go. I mean, that's gonna take, that would potentially take years, or at least a year, depending. Like, I think we need some kind of a report, like, this is like the third time through, I think, on this exact conversation, and we don't seem to be getting anywhere, to be honest. I wasn't here last time, apologize, I was way maker. Um, but we seem to be stuck on this, yes, we want, you know, some unique pieces, or some people might want the whole thing to be unique, but at the same time, I think we have to move forward on the streetscape and as part of the streetscape committee, that's a little bit idle, um, I feel strongly that we need to finish the downtown and, you know, and, and not in a hurry, but this, this summer for sure. Um, so, you know, I'm in favor of some pieces that are unique to downtown, but I'm also in favor of this, um, this scheme that we've got here because it's gone through all of the due process, other than maybe Council coming up with a unique idea, which, which I think is, is good. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to this streetscape furnishings, but I, um, I think it'd be neat to have a few unique pieces. And I just have another question if I could, um, Tim, um, bike racks? Seems to be an awful lot of bike racks, Darren. Um, when I go through and tell me if I'm wrong, there's ten, more than ten little bike racks?
There is, um.
There are ten, right?
There's ten little ones?
Yeah.
Five large ones.
And five large ones, and, um, I know people in town ride bikes a lot, including myself, but I don't see a lot of people uptown parking their, you know, three thousand plus dollar bikes around town, so can you, if you could just tell us how we came to that number?
So, the final number that we came to with Stacy and I walking through now that it's all put in, Stacy being a person who rides a bike, I don't ride bikes at all, you know, so. And Stacy did agree that she thought maybe it might be a little bit excessive, but she did, we just went through each location where she finds that people seem to take their bike and lean it up against buildings and trees and light poles and stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, from an operational point of view, I would rather zero, right? Then that's, that's how, that's how many we have to put in and out, but I just, uh, just Stacy from her recommendation, that's where we came up on that.
Okay. And then, and are there five large bike racks as well?
Yes.
Okay. And how many bikes does the small bike rack hold again? Is it just?
Two.
It's two, one on each side, right? And then the other holds four, doesn't it?
No, it was more than that, I believe it was six.
Six, yeah. So two on the outside and then four center.
Two, both each, coming in from each way.
Okay. So if we found that we didn't need all of those bike racks, like over the next number of years, you could always store some of them and then, what's the lifespan of those things, forever?
Well, yeah, they're public.
They're metal.
Metal.
Yeah. Okay, that's me for now, thanks.
Council Moore?
I'm sorry for coming in a little late, I was with Cecilia, I thought she was coming to the meeting. So this may have been answered before I came in, is the mining cart still in the picture or is the mining cart out? Cause I didn't see it on the list of things.
It's, it's still in, in my budget for it.
And it's included in a hundred thousand.
You know, if you look on the list, it is in the Perryville B Square.
Okay. Um, well, I don't know, was there a motion on the table?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion, just to, to the conversation, right? Uh, and my motion will be that we accept street furniture as it stands, except that we do an RFP for the ones, there are three benches that are outside Pro Hardware Subway and two more in Harry Lefebvre Square, so five, take out five of the A benches and send them to an RFP to get something more unique and then put everything else in. That's my motion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was not a very clear motion.
I need that a little clearer, please.
Okay, so my motion will be, we accept the street furniture as presented, except we remove five A benches, and they are the ones in front of Pro Hardware, Subway, Harry Lefebvre Square. And those, we would do an RFP to do something more Rosland specific.
Is there a second here?
Oh, second to get it on the.
Don't, or Moss?
Do you have it Tracy?
Yeah.
Okay, so my thinking about that is, appreciate where staff's coming from with what we've got here. Oh, wait a minute, I have to change something, but I'll, I'll say it in a minute. I appreciate what, what they've done, I think there, there has been a lot of public input in this. I am disappointed that we didn't have this discussion about doing something unique, you know, a year ago or two years ago, you know, when we did, but I also agree with Council Spear in that we need to move forward and get our downtown furnished because it looks great, but it's unfinished. Um, but I also like the idea of having some unique pieces, and the spots that I've picked are very prominent spots, you know, they're right at Harry Lefebvre Square, they're in the, the places right across Pro Hardware, they're right, they're right in the downtown, the very center of downtown, so I think they'd be good show places, um, to try and get something a little more unique. Um, so that's what I'm thinking. The other thing that I probably need to add to my motion is, I think we need more recycling bins, but maybe I'll put that second, cause I did say put all the rest of it in, but we only have two recycling bins in the entire downtown core, and I just don't think that's enough. Um, one of them is in front of Ross Vegas, which has no food being served, whereas down by the bus stop, you know, where people getting on buses, they're gonna have pop cans, whatever, they, they should have recycling there, they should have, there should be more recycling in front of areas that actually have food service. Um, so Stacy, can I add that to my motion? Additional recycle.
Your worship, I would prefer that that be a second.
Okay, we can do a second, just because my first.
At this time, we're dealing with a bench.
Exactly.
And that would be preferred, thank you.
Okay, just because I said, accept it as is, and I don't really mean that, that's what, take the, accept as is, accept the recycling, cause I wanna deal with recycling separate.
We'll just leave it, make another motion to add to that motion.
Yeah, okay. And, have anything else, is there on that?
Council Fisher hasn't jumped in yet, doesn't want to.
Council Fisher?
Um, so you, uh, planners and engineers have planned this out after design surets and all the other things that we go through to get to this point. Um, notwithstanding the possible need for more recycling areas, I would assume that the people that we hired and paid money to plan this out and design it and engineer it would have a number of recycled material pieces that would be required. I'm all for having more recycling bins, but maybe there's some stats and numbers behind it saying, count of this size, disperse it this way, all that stuff. And as for the bike racks, um, pedestrian friendly, bike friendly town, um, that we're trying to make ourselves become, um, the number that is out on the table may be a number that is meant to encourage more cycling and more activity like that downtown, so I think that, um, leaving them as is shows our welcoming attitude about, uh, cycling activity in our city. Um, as for the Rosland, um, as for the Ra, I, you know, I think you have to go back a little bit, there was a time when I had people coming up to me on the street saying, oh, I hate, just, what are we doing? The design of the town is terrible, it's not Rosland, it's, you know, it's big city, it's this, it's that, you know, I stand out on the street now and I think, that's Rosland, that looks great. And I've heard, I've had a ton of people come up to me, even the ones that, um, were naysayers, saying, oh, well, good job, it really looks great, it's got a good feel, I like the white street, I mean, or the wide sidewalk, so I, you know, the trepidation from, from some folks and also maybe on Council, some people regarding the furniture and things, um, is that changing something causes anxiety and potentially not, and potentially losing the feel of downtown, but I would challenge anyone to go out and say that Rossland lost its feel. It's genuineness, I think it's still genuine, I think it's more genuine and it's actually accentuated with what we've done downtown. I think that, uh, the choice by the design review committee with the support of the design surets are, are good ones. If every, if any, if people find the ore car so egregious that we dump the ore car out and have at least one piece, um, that we have, um, local artisan flair, just remember, our character is built on that old Bank Montreal building and the, um, the post office building and the heritage buildings that we have in town, our, our, our uniqueness, proximity of where we are in the mountains also adds to that. It's not about whether we have, um, a bike rack that's unique, nobody, maybe they will, I mean, I might be wrong, but we think we're beating this one up really well, and I would, it's not that I don't support the motion, um, I don't mind the motion, have a few benches that are different, that are built locally, but I don't see them being a game changer to creating that level of uniqueness that I hear in the room, if you know what I mean? So I, I would say, I mean, I look at the, everybody has their little picky, the thing that they pick on and look at, right? So mine might be the ore car, I'm like, wow, what the hell? I mean, go down to Pistac and grab one that isn't power source, you've got twenty.
Right now.
Yeah. Do you know what I mean? So, so, and he'd be, he'd be thrilled to do something with one of those things, but, no, but the point is, is, um, to go out to RFP, to redesign, to redo stuff, you know, you have volunteers on, on these committees and people that sat in all these meetings, I think, um, I don't think it serves the public well when we do stuff like that. I think we have to listen to what has been put on paper, like the OCP and Mike Mature, our planners, that over and over and over again, and the OCP regarding pedestrian friendly, so having some additional bike racks, yeah, okay, maybe there are too many today, but let's look five years down the road when we have a giant mountain bike festival downtown and every bike rack is full. That should be our vision. Our vision should be bigger than what it is. That's all I'm saying. So I'll vote against it.
Council Moore?
Okay, so I will not support this motion. My main purpose, being here today in this discussion, is what I, is to direct the conversation in such a way that we can keep this money in town. My main goal is to keep this money in town and give somebody local the, the job, the purpose of, of, you know, the money to put these together. And ultimately, I don't care what it looks like in the end, I don't care what things are placed, I don't care how many of each item there is, it's just one hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money to put out of the community when it could stay in the community. In fact, the number I think that we have, isn't it, it doesn't even include installation in that. So, you know, I just, I really want to see somebody, a local carpenter who, or artisan or whoever, metalworker, it just doesn't matter, somebody local being tasked with putting this together within the parameters that they're given and, and give us whatever they can give. Um, this is something, I've talked to a few people who do such work.
Mining cart still in the picture or is the mining cart out? Because I didn't see it on the list.
It's still in my budget for it.
And it's included in a hundred thousand.
It is in the A B square.
Okay. Well, I don't know, was there a motion on the table?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion just to the conversation, right? And my motion will be that we accept street furniture as it stands, except that we do an RFP for the ones, there are three benches that are outside Pro-Hardware subway and two more in Harry Lefave Square. So five, take out five of the A benches and send them to an RFP to get something more unique and then put everything else in. That's my motion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It wasn't a very clear motion.
I need that a little clearer please.
Okay, so my motion will be we accept the street furniture as presented, except we remove five A benches. And they are the ones in front of Pro-Hardware, Subway, Harry Lefave Square. And those, we would do an RFP to do something more Ralston specific.
Is there a second here?
Oh, second to get it on the.
Counselor Walz.
Do you have it Tracy?
Yeah.
Okay, so my thinking about that is appreciate where staff's coming from with what we've got here. Oh wait a minute, I have to change something, but I'll say it in a minute. Appreciate what they've done. I think there has been a lot of public input in this. I am disappointed that we didn't have this discussion about doing something unique, you know, a year ago or two years ago, you know, when we did. But I also agree with Counselor Spear that we need to move forward and get our downtown furnished because it looks great, but it's unfinished. But I also like the idea of having some unique pieces. And the spots that I've picked are very prominent spots. You know, they're right at Harry Lefave Square, they're in the places right across Pro-Hardware, they're right in the downtown, the very center of downtown. So I think they'd be good show places to try and get something a little more unique. So that's what I'm thinking. The other thing that I probably need to add to my motion is I think we need more recycling bins, but maybe I'll put that second. Because I did say put all the rest of it in. But we only have two recycling bins in the entire downtown core, and I just don't think that's enough. One of them is in front of Ross Vegas, which has no food being served, whereas down by the bus stop, you know, when people getting on buses, they're going to have their pop cans, whatever. They should have recycling there, they should have, there should be more recycling in front of areas that actually have food service. So Tracy, can I add that to my motion? Additional recycle bins.
Your worship, I would prefer that that be a second.
Okay, we can do a second, just because my first one.
At this time, we're dealing with benches.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And that would be preferred, thank you.
Okay, just because I said, "Accept it as is," and I don't really mean that. That's what, take the, "Accept as is, except the recycling," because I want to deal with recycling separates.
We'll just leave it making another motion to add to that motion.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Walz, have anything else to say on that?
Counselor Fisher hasn't jumped in yet, doesn't want to.
Counselor Fisher.
So you, planners and engineers have planned this out after design charrettes and all the other things that we go through to get to this point. Notwithstanding the possible need for more recycling areas, I would assume that the people that we hired and paid money to plan this out and design it and engineer it would have a number of recycled material pieces that would be required. I'm all for having more recycling bins, but maybe there's some stats and numbers behind it saying, "Count of this size, disperse it this way," all that stuff. And as for the bike racks, pedestrian friendly, bike friendly town that we're trying to make ourselves become, the number that is out on the table may be a number that is meant to encourage more cycling and more activity like that downtown. So I think that leaving them as is shows our welcoming attitude about cycling activity in our city. As for the Roslin, as for the Ra, I, you know, I think you have to go back a little bit. There was a time when I had people coming up to me on the streets saying, "Oh, I hate just, what are we doing? The design of the town is terrible. It's not Roslin. It's, you know, it's big city, it's this, it's that." You know, I stand out on the street now and I think, "That's Roslin, that looks great." And I've heard, I've had a ton of people come up to me, even the ones that were naysayers, saying, "Oh, well, good job, it really looks great. It's got a good feel, I like the white street," I mean, or the wide sidewalk, so I, you know, the trepidation from some folks and also maybe on council, some people regarding the furniture and things, is that changing something causes anxiety and potentially not, and potentially losing the feel of downtown. But I would challenge anyone to go out and say that Roslin's lost its feel. It's genuineness. I think it's still genuine. I think it's more genuine, and it's actually accentuated with what we've done downtown. I think that the choice by the design review committee with the support of the design charrettes are good ones. If anything, if people find the ore car so egregious that we dump the ore car out and have at least one piece that we have local artisan flair, just remember, our character is built on that old Bank Montreal building and the post office building and the heritage buildings that we have in town. Our uniqueness, proximity of where we are in the mountains also adds to that. It's not about whether we have a bike rack that's unique. Nobody, maybe they will, I mean, I might be wrong, but we think we're beating this one up really well. And I would, it's not that I don't support the motion, I don't mind the motion. Have a few benches that are different, that are built locally, but I don't see them being a game changer, just creating that level of uniqueness that I hear in the room, if you know what I mean? So I, I would say, I mean, I look at the, everybody has their little picky, the thing that they pick on and look at, right? So mine might be the ore car. I'm like, "Wow, what the hell." I mean, go down to Pistack and grab one that isn't power source, you've got plenty of.
Right now.
Yeah. Do you know what I mean? So, so, and he'd be thrilled to do something with one of those things. But, the point is, is to go out to RFP, to redesign, to redo stuff, you know, you've got volunteers on these committees and people that sat in all these meetings. I think, I don't think it serves the public well when we do stuff like that. I think we have to listen to what has been put on paper, like the OCP and Mike Matur, our planners, that over and over and over again, and the OCP regarding pedestrian friendly. So having some additional bike racks, yeah, okay, maybe there are too many today, but let's look five years down the road when we have a giant mountain bike festival downtown and every bike rack is full. That should be our vision. Our vision should be bigger than what it is. That's all I'm saying. So I'll vote against it.
Counselor Walz.
Okay, so I will not support this motion. My main purpose, being here today in this discussion, is what I, is to direct the conversation in such a way that we can keep this money in town. My main goal is to keep this money in town and give somebody local the job, the purpose of, you know, the money to put these together. And ultimately, I don't care what it looks like in the end. I don't care what things are placed, I don't care how many of each item there is. It's just one hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money to put out of the community when it could stay in the community. In fact, the number I think that we have, isn't it, it doesn't even include installation and that. So, you know, I just, I really want to see somebody, a local carpenter who, or artisan or whoever, metalworker, it just doesn't matter, somebody local being tasked with putting this together within the parameters that they're given and, and give us whatever they can give. This is something, I've talked to a few people who do such work, some local carpenters in the community, and they say, yes, it's very doable, and it's very doable for less money than we're presenting here. So that, I won't support this motion because a few unique pieces, to me, is not the goal. The goal is to keep the money in town in the suburbs.
Counselor Walz.
Okay, well, you know, I, I want to say that I do regret that council didn't start this conversation about a year and a half ago. But I do tend to feel very much, as Counselor Bloomay has expressed, it would be nice to at least be able to keep some of these funds within the local economy. So maybe a way of getting at this and actually progressing is to look at the low hanging fruit, what's easy. So maybe we move away from the current motion and we start with garbage and recycle. Are we all in favor of that? Because that isn't something that I see being tendered locally. You know, that's, that's a mechanism, et cetera, for bear poofing, but I don't expect anyone in the local area to have that kind of expertise. So maybe it's something as simple as that. I mean, I would like to talk about the, where the design for Harry Lefave Square came from. I don't really know where it came from. There's the ore cart. And, you know, in my opinion and some other people that I've been showing these drawings to, the Harry Lefave Square space, I would say it's pretty prime real estate. You know, most of the time it's sitting there empty or sparsely used. But when we have a community event downtown and we're, we're using Harry Lefave for the gathering spot, I'm not sure that having a mining cart and a big bike rack sitting right in the middle of the square is the best use of space. So that's something else I'd like to get at. But, you know, if we can find, try to find a way of working at this rather systematically and figuring out how to proceed. I mean, I'm certainly in support of going forward with the garbage cans, the recycled cans. I would like an explanation of why we have fifteen garbage cans and two recycled cans. So if I can ask that question.
You actually have three recycling bins. There's going to be one at Ross Vegas, there's going to be one at the post office, and then one in the Harry Lefave Square. Now, talking to the guys who do the garbage is downtown, this is where we came up with the locations. I know Counselor Moore indeed at the bus stops, but we don't seem to get a lot of cans left around, bottles left around those areas. So we're trying to place them, for example, charity store down there, Roslin Grocery, there's a lot of bottles and cans that come out of there, and they seem to migrate, you know, towards the bank, so that's why we put one there. Harry Lefave Square, that is the gathering for, you know, younger kids at night, so we're hoping that will get utilized. And then we did put one over by the post office because we don't have one on that side, and we got Ronnie's store over here, and, you know, their country kitchen, why not hoping that they migrate that way. The garbage cans, unfortunately, garbage cans, there's, there's probably a half a dozen that get used lots. And unfortunately, when I say they get used lots, it's a lot of household garbage. It's not people throwing their, you know, their paper, chocolate bar wrapper in or anything like that. It is people stuffing their garbage. So the locations, we just went through with, asked the guys who clean up, saying, "Where do we need garbage cans?" And those are the locations that, that seem to, not only in the charrette from ISL, you know, as far as aesthetics and whatnot, but also the everyday guy going down there and cleaning up.
Your worship, I don't know if council wants to look at those garbage cans, but it's been doing really difficult to get your domestic garbage into the garbage cans. They're almost like a mailbox.
Perfect. Yeah, it'd make it a lot harder.
Very difficult to put your garbage in there. Can I follow up?
So does that explain the staff's preference to go to the new ones? You find, you think that they will be better to discourage that kind of abuse of the garbage, of the public garbage cans?
They're all for wildlife approved.
Okay.
I don't know, if everybody looked at those garbage cans, they're not a hundred percent perfect for our application. I don't know if you looked, but they got a lever down the bottom, a foot lever. Which, I'm quite worried that the snow's going to get in there and, and cause issues with the mechanism. So still working with the supplier to see if there's another alternative.
So we put levers to lift the lid off and when you dump it?
No, it's for when you drop your garbage in, you push the lever, it opens out.
Okay.
You drop your garbage in and then it closes back up.
Right.
Your worship, we could take a short break and go on with the candidates.
Has everybody seen where we're like that?
No, I haven't seen that. I'd like to see it, but you can do it.
Counselor Fisher was going to eat and we'll have a look at these garbage.
No, I don't. I think that there's a motion out there, and I kind of screwed it up by just blathering on about nothing, but there's a motion on the table regarding specifically benches, and we've been talking about everything else, but, so I think we have to deal with this before we do anything else.
See, I'd just like to, you know, I don't, you know, the amount of work and effort that's gone into this, this streetscape over the last, I guess, three years, you know, as Counselor Fisher also said, all the professionals have been involved, the staff's been involved, this recycled material, which I think is very important to Roslin. The way we're going, I don't think we're going to get anything downtown this year. The way, the time's running short. I don't have any problem with that furnishing as it is, with the streetscape. The only thing I'd like to see myself is Harry Lefave Square become more of a, an art, a local flavor area, where we could totally do Harry Lefave Square with local artists, you know, Roslin artists or tradespeople or whatever. The rest of it, I don't have any problem with it. So I think if we went with Counselor Moore's motion, you know, changing the ones in front of the old hardware store and in front of Subway, it would mix, you'd have too much of a contrast between the new stuff and, or the local stuff and this other stuff. So I think if we could keep maybe the main street with this type of furnishing and then just have Harry Lefave Square, local flavor, I think that would be, it showcased the Roslin, the local talent. So, that, Counselor Spear.
Yeah, so as far as the cost go, and Counselor Bloomay's suggestion that through conversation with some people that she knows, that the cost could be much less, I think Darren has emphasized that the life of these pieces of furniture for the cost is a significant part of why we're spending the money on this type of furniture for an Alpine community. And the wear that they are going to endure, hopefully, and the guarantee around that, the warranty, et cetera, is going to stand us in good stead for a long time, like twenty-five years is a long period of time, you know, two and a half decades. So, you know, whereas you're going to have some local crafted pieces that, I mean, I'm envisioning wood, I don't know if you're envisioning something different, wood and metal, combination perhaps, but, you know, I ju, you know, I just, I'm stuck on this because, you know, this was, you know, prepared for us professionally. Yes, we should have maybe had some input to it and maybe the process, but we've had lots of opportunities to have, you know, to have conversations about it through charrette, et cetera. And this, I mean, I went to all those charrettes and looked at it and thought, "It looked great, actually." And as far, so having said that, the cost and this cost savings, that doesn't, I'm not, that's not equating in my mind because of the guarantee around this kind of material versus wood that maybe lasts as long, I don't know. But I don't know the qualities of, of that wood, or the endurance of that wood. I know that wood in Roslin doesn't last all that long when it's certainly left out in the winter. And as far as the positioning, Counselor Moore's suggestion about the X Hardware Store, which is an empty building, and Subway, and then Harry Lefave, like kind of a pod down at this end of town and nothing at that end of town, I don't know if that kind of asymmetrical approach to it is, doesn't really make sense to me. You know, kind of a balance would suit my brain more if you're going to do that. So I don't know, maybe we should just go with a couple of things in Harry Lefave, if, what is in Harry Lefave again, as far as the benches?
You have the two picnic tables.
The two picnic tables? Oh, the last, same. Right. Okay, so the picnic table, the bike racks, the ore cart, the garbage and the recycle. So those two picnic tables would really be the only two things, oh benches. So two benches and two picnic tables. That's significant.
And probably replace that mining cart. And more likely replacing the mining cart.
Right, but that, that's for discussion, right?
Yes.
Because the motion right now includes the mining cart.
No.
No, not yet.
Didn't address the mining cart.
No.
No, but you said, "Leave it as it is," other than those pieces.
Yeah, the only thing I was talking about, five benches, is all I was talking about.
So five benches being just the, not the picnic tables?
No, I didn't.
Just the benches?
My motion was just five benches.
Right. Could you explain, could, could you explain why those locations, like the hardware store that's not there?
Yeah, well, there's going to be something there.
There will be, hopefully.
We're going to have broadband, and we're going to have a lot of new businesses. In answer to the acting mayor's comment, the two benches are there near the street and the other items in front of the Subway and across on the, on the old hardware site, that's a cluster, a sort of a downtown cluster where I thought, as opposed to having them scattered sort of randomly, there would be sort of this cluster of sort of more artistic things, right? So that's why I selected those, plus they are in notable places. So to me, that made sense, to cluster them as opposed to make them random. And it made sense. The other thing I was thinking about, which now has just completely gone out of my head, I'm sorry, I had another point. Oh, part of this was my effort at a compromise, because as others have said here, I do wish we'd had this conversation earlier. I do think the train is out of the station, we need to go forward and, and get this furniture in. But this was a compromise because we would give, whatever this ends up being, close to ten thousand dollars or something, to local artisans to, to come up with something. I would not want wood unless we could be guaranteed that someone's going to promise it lasts twenty-five years. I'm thinking it's got to be something more like metal or some, some, something that's going to last. And that would be in the, in the RFP, we'd have to specify that it's not just put up a wood bench that's going to decay in, you know, five years or something. So we'd have to be really specific about that. But it was a bit of a compromise. I think honestly, it's too late to go and redo everything. But to have a few pieces that are unique would be, would be great and keep some money in the local economy. But then, everything else goes.
Counselor Fisher?
Make one other comment. Bounces around the edges, but the fear of spending money outside of the area is part of a purchasing policy rather than a discussion on a specific project, in my mind. And this council and others like it that sat here in Roslin haven't had any kind of local preference. I mean, we hired a company from Nanaimo to do the street, right? And other projects that we've done, we've hired engineers from Kelowna, planners from Kamloops. And so all that money's gone out, literally millions of dollars. So I, I, I find it a gesture, while I applaud it, I still find it a gesture that we'd be looking to spend money locally unless we're looking at changing our purchasing policy to have a local preference, which then when you open it up under the MMCD, you get yourself in the glue also. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see that looking at it from that point of view is necessarily valid. Not that it's an invalid thought, but it doesn't work from where we sit when we go to let these contracts out. But a part of it is that I think that, that it's our responsibility to be looking down the road as far as we can and keeping these things within a certain vein that the councils that sat before us set the direction. So the council that's sitting at this table, I'm, I don't particularly think that we need to be looking back saying, "Oh, we should have been part of the pro," we were. This council was part of the process. It set up the people that sat on the design review committee, it hired the people that coordinated the design charrette, it was. So to actually be in there means, now that we're looking back on it, we're micromanaging and saying, "Oh, we don't like this, we don't like that," and then we're picking and choosing the things we're doing. I think that's bad policy, that's bad governance. That's just my opinion.
Counselor Spear.
I hate to agree. No, no, I only, I only, I only hate to agree not because of Counselor Fisher, but I hate to agree because he's right. And, I'm just kidding. We are in committee at the hall. And you're absolutely right, and, you know, I, you said it more eloquently than I would have, was going to say it, in that it's not our job to manage the artisans of our community through this discussion of this project. It is through the higher level policymaking, and I, I totally agree with that. And to go back and to fuss around with this, it, you know, it just, I know it drives staff mad, and it starts to drive us into all kinds of directions where we're freewheeling. And frankly, I don't, I mean, there's times to freewheel, this is not a time to freewheel. So my position on is a couple of benches, now I'm saying, you know, that Harry Lefave may be a couple of benches, or not, of local artisans, but as far as the whole project goes, no. We, we need to move forward. We've made this, we've done this. It's our job as, you know, as city council to keep moving forward. And it's exactly the same as when we had the big conversation about parking and parallel parking, and we were all over the map on that, which was okay, was, it was good discussion. You know, and we ended up, you know, staying with, you know, with what we've got, and probably we shouldn't have, but however, because that wasn't in the plan. You know, I, I, yeah, it, it's a tough one. And I don't disagree that we should be supporting local economy, that's, that's great. But I don't think this is the time at this point in this project to, yeah, to be freewheeling and, and changing things. And I wanted to ask one more question, being as one for the whole. When I was downtown on the weekend and came out of the Chiller Beer Wine Store there, before I went, I looked down and I looked at the garden, and of course, I saw, I counted, I counted fifteen cigarette butts, fifteen, in that little space there. So I took it upon myself to go in when I went in, and I asked the gal who works there, and I just said to her, "You know, what do you think?" Right? And she said they used to have a bucket of sand outside there. And they had a bucket of sand out there, and people would get out of, she said, "You know, people would get out of their car and put their butt in, the sand bucket." So I said to her, "Well, do you think that we need, you know, an ashtray there? Like an ashtray that fits into the streetscape, not a plastic bucket full of sand?" Because to me, that's, you know, that's pretty, pretty contrary to this beautiful streetscape. And she says, "Well, I can put the bucket of sand out again." And I said, "No." And, you know, I explained who I was and just said that I, I wanted more input about the cigarette butt thing because it was awful. And we just had the smoking downtown conversation, which didn't go anywhere, so I think we need to talk about it. And I think we need to decide, are we going to, and I know, for me personally, I don't want any ashtrays downtown, but for our community and the look of our community and the million, millions of dollar project downtown. And I saw Ferraris had a plastic kind of thing outside, like right outside the doors. It was an ast, a big plastic ashtray thing. I don't know if Darren knows anything about it. And it was tacky and it was ugly, but you know what? They were concerned about cigarette butts, so, you know, power to them. So could we, through you, worship, to Darren, maybe just get a little bit of input or some feedback about that?
Yeah, I think we should.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're off the motion, sorry.
Heard the discretion, if not, I'm going to call a question.
Okay, can you read the motion?
Yes, please correct me if I have a question. Moved by Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Wallace, resolved at the committee, the whole recommends counsel that the street furniture plan be accepted with the exception of five type A benches at the locations of Pro-Hardware, Subway, and Harry Lefave Square, and that the city issue a request for proposal for both benches in order to attract local artisans.
Quick, I'll be really quick. I'll be on. No, I, I just want to explain that I will be voting against this motion because I don't, I don't think those are the elements that I would pull out if I was going to pull something out, and it does say in the motion, everything else other than that. So that's enough for now. So, that's enough for now, I'm, I won't be voting in favor of the motion.
Okay. Question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion defeated? Any other motions? Counselor Wallace.
Okay, how do I phrase this? That, that council reconsider, that council reconsider or review the, the furniture elements within Harry LaFave Square? Is that a motion? Or how about, how about this, to make it even more specific? That council remove the mining cart from Harry LaFave Square, move the big bike rack out closer to the sidewalk, and remove the two A benches to be replaced by a, and local artisans work. Is that good enough for you, Trace?
Your worship, I just think that, we've got, remove the mining cart?
Remove the mining cart? Move the big bike rack towards the sidewalk, closer to the sidewalk? And, and remove the two A benches to be replaced by a, a local artisan project?
Do we have a second?
Second for discussion. I have a question. Where did you want to move the big bike rack?
Well, just closer to the sidewalk. It seems really odd that it's sitting in the middle of the square.
It's not really in the middle.
Well, that's a real bump, no? I mean, think of the line.
It's not in the middle, right? It's this way.
Like, it's Columbia.
Are you looking at the final page?
Here's Ferrari. The final page, looking, yeah.
Okay, I'll show you. There's Columbia. You have the bike rack sitting in the middle of the side of the square here. This is the alley going down, I'm right here, right?
Mm-hmm, on the edge.
So why is it not closer to the sidewalk? Because to me, this, this is what I mentioned earlier about Harry LaFave Square. When we have a function in there, and we have a lot of the community in there, then we have a bike rack taking up an area here, the size of a picnic bench, and we have a mining cart taking up the area here, again. Like, if you look at the way that the flow is in there, I just don't understand why you have those two items sitting in the middle of the square. Because they don't seem, it seems like prime real estate right there. And the function of those doesn't need to be in the middle of the square. So, I don't know where this design came from. But, I mean, to me, the mining cart, and I'd like an authentic one out of somebody's backyard to bring it by, would look better out here in front of the city hall. That's just where I'm coming from. And, and these two benches, I mean, maybe that's the opportunity for the localizing contributions.
Counselor, more?
The rails are already there for the mining carts. When you say you want to remove it, the rails are already, yes. And I'm not sure whether council knows what the mining cart is. It's actually, it's not really a mining cart, why they call it, it's just a flat deck table for kids to get up on, play around, you know, sit. So it's basically just a big seating area.
So it could have a function to it?
It does have a function, that's the purpose of it.
Totally, it's flat. Not a cart, huh?
Yeah.
You remember seeing it?
No.
Yeah, it was flat. Big and flat, it's great, it's a, it's a platform to sit on and jump on or whatever on, probably skateboard.
Yeah, it's not a mining cart.
No, it's not in one of those old things that I'm totally opposed to having downtown.
Question over to staff also, on, and the bike rack, the way I've seen this bike rack is it's up against the landscape portions there, right? It's at the edge of the paved part, but it abuts the, the landscape part with the boulders.
It does, and because you've got to get bikes in from both sides, that's probably how to pull it out, so that there's room to come in from the soft skate as well as from the other side from the sard skate.
Yeah. So in, in keeping with, with the conversation, I second the motion to get the discussion out there, but I'm actually not in support of it. I don't, I don't have a problem with those things, although I did like the idea of the benches being more something different, but I'm not supporting the whole thing.
So are you also talk, are you also going to keep the rest of the furniture the same? For the rest of the streetscape?
Well, yeah, the rest of it is picnic tables, I like them going.
I mean, for the rest, for the rest of the Columbia, I mean, we were just talking about...
You know, I am reaching that point in the discussion, I think we're kind of, you know, a little bit too, too little, too late. And certainly, the discussion about the warranty, the safety approvals, risk management, all of the rest of it, I mean, it, it makes very good sense. So, there you go.
Are you going to add that to the motion, give them the motion to that, or, because you just added the, fairly basically, okay.
No, no, only the motion, I'm going to do it.
Counselor, Spirit?
Yeah, no, I, and, you know, the, the whole mining, the mining cart, I, I like it, and, you know, I thought it was, I thought it was cool, it was modern, it's flat, it has a sense of history, but it's not one of those ones from out at Pistax or, and no offense to Mike, because I like riding my mic by and seeing his, his museum there. But really, when we put that mining cart down underneath the sign, if you remember the new Roslin sign, and we, Darren, you know, and we quickly went, ah, no, get that out of there, poor Darren. Because it doesn't go with the scheme and the design, right? Like, we're, we're trying to modernize whilst keeping our historic, you know, sense of who we are in Roslin, which I think is, it's a good, it's a good mix. So, I don't have a problem with maybe those two benches being, you know, we're getting down now, we're whittling away at the two benches, right? Is it really worth it for two benches? But I like the bike rack, I like the mining cart, I like the rest of Harry LaFave, so I'll vote against the motion because of that, but maybe we'll put another one on for the benches.
Counselor, Blue.
Okay, so I disagree that it would need to take a lot of time to have somebody local to do this, you know, these people work quickly. Also, as far as the, I mean, if we're paying, you know, a super huge premium for this 25 year warranty, when, you know, what are the chances we're going to, what, get $40,000 worth out of this warranty? I mean, basically, even if, if they come out being wood slats on metal, or, or, you know, just like the, the picture here, well, they're not wood, but they're what they're wood. Anyway, if they end up being true wood, slats, well, if something breaks, then you swap out for a new slat, you know, and that's, that's not something that's very expensive. So to justify, you know, an incredible increase in cost by saying, oh, but it's warranty, I just don't think that's, that's necessary. And, so anyway, I still remain on my, in my position of, I, I really do believe that to do lo, to do this locally would not be complicated, would not cost a lot of money, and we could still deal with, you know, whatever parameters are necessary to have options.
Further to discussion? All questions? All in favor of the motion? All opposed? Motion defeated?
I'd like to think the motion that we approve the streetscape plan out there.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Can I ask a question? So, if we approve it now, when do we, we, well, we have street furniture in this, this summer?
Some of the stuff is three weeks away. Some of the, very few of the furnishings are like six weeks away. So I, I would say we probably have 90% in by, probably by July 1st.
And the rest? Middle?
Yeah, middle of July.
So, by the time summer starts?
Discussion done? Fisher?
Your worship, I'm just wondering if, at this time, if that is the resolution, if perhaps
it should also include, that the plan be approved and that staff be approved and should purchase the furniture, because we've not had that. That could be a second motion, I'm just wondering if that...
You can add it, sir.
This is still a recommendation to council.
That's correct.
Counselor, Spirit?
Yeah, so the ashtray thing, concept, I just wonder how...
Do you want to make it a second motion?
Oh, yes, sorry, I was thinking that if we wanted to add it in with an amendment, but, we'll just, yeah, we'll talk about it.
I did want to say one thing, I am, I'm just curious what council's feelings are about additional recycling. Now, we, now that Darren has said there's three, and we just listed two here, do we feel three is enough for this community that's supposed to be so green and progressive and like our recycling?
I think I, my comment on that would be, that staff could come back to council at any time, so we get them out there and say, we need one more, and we get one more.
End location.
End location, yeah. That'd be my guess. Because I agree with you, and we should be having what we need out there for recycling.
Yeah, I just think you end up with a lot of recyclables that end up in the trash. When there's no recycling available, it goes into the trash. And, and that's not the ones you're going to see set by the curbstone, those are the ones that have gone into the trash, right? Where it's recycling easier, more easily available.
Counselor, Blumey.
Oh, I was just going to say that, you know, people are generally, especially in a town like ours, are generally motivated enough to walk half a block to get to the recycling bin. And, so I'd be much more in favor of just waiting to see if it becomes an issue, or, you know, just revise the staff recommendation, just accept it.
Through your worship, can I call you that?
The called worship?
Stuff, I'm just wondering if, will that be a possibility in the future? Today, next year, if we decide we need two more recycle bins, do we have enough, I guess, is this, does this company show enough longevity, or will that line still be available, that kind of thing? If you have any idea of that? Or will it come next year, we want three more, and they will no longer be available?
This company's been around for, I think, it's 35 years, so that's one of the reasons why we've chosen them. So I would anticipate that, no, it should be no problem. That's the other reason, is parts are available, you know, on the shelf kind of things as well.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor, Spirit?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I do feel strongly, I mean, when people, you know, I like to, to, to think that what Counselor Blumey says is right, that people are going to walk with their can for half a block and put it in, I'm sure there are some for sure. But, you know, just when you think about the big picture, and you've got a garbage can, you've got a recycling bin, people immediately look to the re, well, I hope they, look to the recycling bin, look what they've got in their hand and go, can I put it in the recycle? But if the recycling bin is not there and the garbage cans are there, they go, well, no recycling bin, in it goes, right? And, you know, I've seen that many, many instances. But, I trust that, you know, this design, I don't know, I, I think there's a lot of garbage cans and not enough recycling, I, I agree with you, and, or I agree with whomever. And so, do we, can we go ahead and, I'm just wondering, should we be, should we be pulling back on the number of garbage cans and having more recycling bins, you know, complementing those garbage cans? That's my, my, my question to staff, I guess.
Counselor, Wallace.
Okay, so we heard earlier that...
Yeah.
We heard earlier that staff is still looking at these, that these may not be the final one because of concerns over the foot pedal and snow. Is there a possibility of finding a combination, garbage can, recycle, and ashtray, all in one little unit, so that we have a number of those down the street? And then, you know, it's very clear to the public where things are supposed to go.
You know, but, just looking today, actually, they do have combination ones, but they're not bearware. Now, I haven't asked the company if that's something they can swap in, you know, one of the normal, our trash cans for a bearware one, it's a possibility, that we could. So my thought is, if council, if it's possible to leave that open to our discretion, if I can fit in another recycling unit or something like that, and take out a garbage can, as long as I stay within, you know, the budget, would council be okay with that?
I would definitely like to see more recycling and leave it in your discretion to do it.
Counselor, Fisher?
Unfortunately, I'm a bit of an expert in garbage and recycling. At the golf course, we have both, and by and large, people respect the recycle bins. And we've actually considered anything going forward. I think I talked about communication pieces before with us, in terms of the type of town that we have. You're never going to stop that bad person from taking a hamburger and putting it in the recycling bin, they're, they're going to do that. And the guys are going to have to dig through that stuff, because we have to dig through it at the golf course. But by and large, 90% of the people use the recycling area and don't use the other. The thing that we were going to start doing on the course was ask people to bring their garbage in from the course, rather than throw sandwiches into the, into the things out on. So, I mean, in terms of our communication piece, I think there's something that we leave the things the way they are now, but there's a, a little bit of a awareness around recycling, hey, there's recycling bins in, in Roslin now, you know? Then, please use them only for recycling. You know, with, with, people do, if you hit them enough with that communication message, if the press helps out a bit and gets that word out for us, that we keep an eye on it. But I guarantee you that our guys are still going to have to dig through the garbage and take bottles and cans out of the garbage and put it in recycling, and vice versa for garbage in the garbage site. And I think, since I do it actually myself, dig around the garbage for cans, I think we're kind of stuck with that. That's just part of what happens operationally. And I know that the guys already do. So, do that, separate some of that recycling from the garbage. So, I think if we monitor it, and we see it, and we add one later on, I think we're in good shape. Or two, or three, or whatever the number needs to be.
Counselor, Blue.
In that, along that Main Street there, they have bear-proof bins that are recycling and garbage as one unit. And they don't have the foot pedals, they actually have something like a car door handles, and, which is, you know, actually kind of grows too, whatever you deal with it, and it's like a mail, like a mailbox, too. So it's probably similar to this one. But, anyway, so such a thing does exist, and, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, it does exist, I've seen it, but I don't know.
Yeah, there are hand-operated ones, we're trying to stay away from that, you know, just because of, you know, because of hygiene and whatnot.
Yeah. And that, I can agree with you.
But not saying it's, you know, it can't be, can't be...
Yeah, no, I agree.
If, if the foot pedal, if we can't come up with a good solution with the snow of that, and maybe that's why the town has got that type as well.
Further discussion? Question of the motion? All in favor? Motion passed.
Two A, ashtray? The ashtray thing. I want to let that go, because, um, yeah, I don't know, if Darren has any suggestions around subtle, good-looking ashtray units that we could have strategically positioned, you know, the liquor outside, well, this store here, I mean, people go in, I don't know, I, I, I wouldn't mind just some conversation around, could we have three ashtrays downtown or something where there's solid, heavy things that people can't remove? I don't know if anyone has any suggestions, but I don't want to see cigarette butts everywhere.
I agree, we've been finding at Harry LaFave Square, it is, there's ash, you know, there's butts everywhere. If you look right outside the door here, we actually put, it's a silver one, but if we could get it in like a powdered black, it's a tall, skinny-looking device that works for cigarette butts. We also have one down at the Myers Hall, it's not here, it's aesthetically pleasing, you know, but, yeah, there, there are options out there. And I would personally like to see one near the Harry LaFave Square, because it's going to be a maintenance nightmare, you know?
Is one enough for there?
No, probably not, you probably need 20 downtown, but if they're in the tree wells, they're, you know, and it's, yeah, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a maintenance...
Okay, I'll make a motion then. So, I'll make a motion that staff, you know, looks into purchasing, or does purchase, I don't know, three or four?
Get a recommendation from the staff.
Yeah. Yeah, staff, a staff recommendation back to council regarding placement and, and type of ashtray systems that we could put downtown to eliminate the, the butts going on the ground. And the other thing, again, is communication and education as well.
Segmented by Counselor...
In our newsletter that we'll get out sometime.
Discussion.
Well, just one comment, um...
Well, just one comment, which I did make when we were talking about banning smoking downtown, which is since the province instituted the three-meter rule, there are no ashtrays available anywhere. And that, and that's part of the issue. I mean, you can't speak for all smokers, but most of them are fairly conscientious. And if, if there was an ashtray available, they would use it. So, you know, it, it is a nasty litter issue and certainly very labor intensive. So I'd rather see a few, you know, well-hidden ashtrays around and then staff not have to deal with that, that labor and that.
Discussion. Question, all in favor? Motion passed.
Sorry, we're just hoping to catch you second.
Counselor Wallace.
Thank you. I have another question, and since we're having this.
Me as well.
You know, hey, we've got a lot of time. Can we ask, what is the plan for certain parking stalls downtown that have been designated as, I don't think that we've received this information, that have been designated as handicapped but may not be in the right location? And also the area in front of the pool here? So whether there's any intention of staff to change some of those lines?
Weren't you going to do a survey after the spring? Weren't you going to do a survey this spring about the disabled parking?
Yeah, it's, um, it's a mix between the highways and the city. A lot of that stuff like out here, that's highways. That was from their, you know, planners up in Calhoun. So there was not going to be any parking here. But now, if you look at Common Sense, tells us that there's lots of room there for parking. So when we meet with the local guys, the local highways guys, we're going to approach them, you know, on a, on a, you know, right here kind of thing. Not taking it to Calhoun just because, you know, trucks go by at fifty and there's only, you know, this many feet and it's not allowed. So I'm hoping we'll be able to convince highways otherwise of that. The handicap stalls, I don't want to say, but they don't work. There's, there's, they're, they're not in the right places. So when the highways, actually they're coming over next week, we'll have a discussion with them. I'm thinking that the local guys won't care where we put them now. Now the project's done and it's out of the, out of the higher planner's hands that we should be able to make a, some sort of agreement to change a few things around.
Yeah, but I think the biggest ones in front of furrows are the handicapped stalls, the second one in, and there's no access to.
Everybody parks in that stall right next to it. So it needs to have signage. We don't have any signage down there, you know, and that's the problem, right? So with that other money that was a lot for downtown to finish off a few things, we want to stick some posts, the bus stops outside of, outside of the sushi place over there. Nobody knows not to park there because there's no, you know, it's not, it's not yellow. It's, the curb's not yellow. There's no signage indicating. So we have, we have a bit of work to do to, to improve things.
Counselor.
Yeah, and as far as the blue goes, like, I like blue. I love blue. Do we have to have that blue, those blue stripes? Like, that's the way it is now? That's the new program?
Yes.
Okay. So if you change it blue like that?
It will be. Yeah, that's, it's just a standard.
Okay.
Counselor.
Yeah, the other handicap issue, the one by the library doesn't have a ramp. So that's an issue on that one. And the one that's outside of Prestige, I mean, if you were in a wheelchair and you were trying to get into Prestige, you've got an incredibly steep ramp. And we have a discussion with Prestige to have a handicap spot down there. And then that place that's currently the handicap up top, you could probably have three cars.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's two for sure, but maybe three.
Yeah, it'd be really, I mean, some of it's just common sense. So I, I appreciate the fact that the local guys might be a little more amenable to some changes.
Who else? Counselor.
So since you are acting mayor, would you be able to give a quick reply to the email that we, that council received on the day of the incident? And just say that, you know, Darren will be talking to people next week?
You could do that.
I think we need to probably make a motion because there's not just, we're being reported to from staff, but there's been other people with mobility challenges that have spoken to me personally. And I said, "Well, just wait till it's finished and it'll get squared up." And I kind of feel remiss in not bringing it forward and then when we had this other email. So I think maybe I'd like to make a motion that staff report back to council on persons with disabilities, stalls, and adjustments to those in the community.
I'd like to see those emails. I, I, I haven't seen them, but there are issues out there.
I've got one, just one recently, but.
Well, Deanie Worsko pulled me up at home and just said, you know, she's got to get into the pharmacy and that. And pulls in and somebody's parked there where the ramp is. And so I think that with added respect for her and other people with mobility issues, I'd like to make it a motion, a formal motion of council, that we direct staff to provide a report of what we're going to be doing about creating better mobility functionality downtown.
And include signage?
And include.
What's happening with the signage?
Whatever they, whatever staff thinks is important.
I'm talking to them.
Seconded by Counselor Spur. Discussion. All in favor? Maybe, maybe the press could bigger note that council is going to be looking into, into the disability parking issues.
While we're talking on the street, the, the other issues that we've talked about sort of tangentially were other signage issues that we have, like we have a no idling by law, we have our new dog by law stuff. And are there any plans for any signage to be covering those issues?
Well, anti-idling, I, I haven't, no. I'm not saying that it's not going to happen. I just haven't been involved in that. But they, the dog ones, we just got the final print just last week, I think. So it should be up within a couple of weeks.
Okay. I'd like to have, I mean, because the anti-idling thing has come up a few times and I thought that was actually being included in some of the signage.
Unless planning's got that. I, I wasn't aware of it or thinking of it. Not saying it can't be.
Well, in the interest of avoiding having our Main Street covered in "Don't do this" and "Don't do that" signs, I mean, there needs to be some sort of a comprehensive plan of, you know, putting the information in compact places rather than selling a sign every stall, you know, and "Welcome to Roslyn." The other thing, I've stolen this from another community who will be nameless, but I like the idea of idling gets you nowhere. It's just a nice way of, of reminding people to, so.
Why do we have that issue though? Like honestly, in the winter, when you think it's cold and people idle, I really haven't seen anyone just leaving their car idling and going and getting a coffee.
Some of the delivery trucks do.
Yeah, maybe that's a matter of just talking to them rather than putting up signs. I mean, I don't think the average citizen in Roslyn, well, even the guys in the big diesels, they're not leaving them running and going in and drinking coffee for half, that I'm aware of. I mean, I just see it. I don't see it.
We've had a few calls, you know, at public works, but not too many. You know, people going, you know, this guy constantly does this, so then we will give him a call.
Yeah, I think that's the kind of Roslyn one, give him a call, "Hey, what are you doing, Jimmy?"
I, I just, the signposts, we're struggling with downtowns because we don't want to clutter up Main Street having a signpost. Signpost there, not only is it a maintenance nightmare, so we're trying to find a happy medium. And it's, yeah, because there's nothing worse than having a whole lack of signposts downtown. Because our old, if you remember, our old streetscape, we had those streetlights and then we had these round poles that used to have just signs on them. And eventually they, you know, they, they fell by the wayside. We got rid of them. It's just getting people trained. And I'm hoping more line or more striping or blue paint, yellow paint, stuff like that, you know, and a few signs here and there will, will help with that.
Counselor Spur.
Yeah, I, I really don't like the post-sign concept very much myself either. And, you know, and I agree with Counselor Wallace that, you know, saying, "Don't do this, don't do that." You know, circle with a line through it, that symbol is kind of tacky actually. So, yeah, the, you know, to educate people and the idling, you know, by law, I think we remind through communication again. I really, yeah, the fewer signs with po, on post downtown, I'm, yeah, I'm totally in favor. Less is better on that.
With that in mind, and we actually need to do the education. We need to send out newsletters. We need to have stuff posted on the website or Did You Know? And I mean, you can do it. You can communicate things in a nice way. It doesn't have to be all this, this business. But a lot of people don't, you know, don't know.
Thank you for not idling. Thank you for walking your dog on a leash. I mean, there's positive language versus negative language that goes a lot further.
If we're not going to put up signs, then we do need to communicate. We haven't really done a great job of either, right? One or the other. And probably communication's the better one.
Any further discussion? Okay, meeting of, meeting of the whole.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Why are we doing that?
No, not for the meeting of the whole.
Well, no, this is a recess, isn't it?
No.
No, your worship, this is a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Seconded by Counselor Spur. All in favor? Minuteman.
I knew we weren't going to take two hours.
Where's those garbage cans?
Yeah, that's.
So, you know, I went back and read that.
Yeah.
Do you think?
I read it this afternoon and then.
It should be in the minutes.
In the minutes of the thirteenth. And then almost down to the bottom of all that.
Just sorry, where? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's right, in the, in the blue building? That's right. Yeah, we talked about it.
Andrew, why are you picking on me with email?
What do you mean?
Just dropped. Didn't you get my email back?
I got your email back. I wrote you back.
Did you? I didn't see it.
Oh, yeah. I wrote you a two-liner right back.
What did it say?
It said, "Thanks very much and I appreciate your comments and we should talk about it." You didn't get that?
I didn't see that, sorry, but I do get. It's after that, I know.
But now I won't be part of the press anymore. We can have an even more meaningful discussion.
Why? What are you doing?
What am I doing?
Retiring.
I'm retiring from the press. I'm full-time farming now.
Are you really?
Yeah, well, we'll see how long that lasts, but as long as possible.
Yeah, no kidding. Are you excited about that?
Oh, I'm stoked. This is my.
More of your passion.
Well, it's been my passion for fifteen years. But now I'm actually, I've been working up to it little by little. And, well, a really good farmer I knew died in the spring. And, and that's kind of left the, the market without one of its main suppliers. And I hoped to get, and this was in March. And then I went to this conference in March where I met some, some people about my age who are just doing really amazing things. Started farms and they're making a little bit of money anyway. And so it was in March. I was like, you know what? Forget this. I've got to go full-time on it. So I'm going to give it a shot and see where, see where it goes. But it seems, it just seems important to me, so.
Well, if it's important, that's a thing that you got to do.
But in the meantime, most of the people I've seen who are successful specialize on kind of one thing. But my problem is that I've got everything going on.
Right.
So it's really slowing me down. I mean, I've got to give myself a break, I guess, because it's only been three months since I decided that this is what I'm going to do. But I'm not ready yet. I'm like, ah, I was meant to have carrots in the ground right now, you know? I was meant to have this and this and this, and I'm way behind.
Right.
But just don't get them.
Yeah, everybody that, no matter what they've done, it's kind of the boring guy that just keeps hammering away at the thing that they do that makes it in the end. It never seems to be the guy that races out and, you know what I mean?
You've just got to do, I've got to set it up right, is what I keep telling myself. I'm not going to, I've done enough projects to know that if you do a bad job at the beginning, it really would.
The turtle on the hair thing.
Yeah, well, I'm definitely on the turtle side right now. I'm killing the hairs though and selling them if you're.
My wife loves them. How much are they?
I, I sell them at ten bucks a pound.
So how, I mean.
A dead bunny dressed up in a plastic bag is twenty bucks.
Okay. You should get us some. How many, how many do you have available?
You know, I don't have many going on right now and they're all, all the ones that are living are already bought. And I just had eight baby bunnies this morning. Yeah, this is so cute. There's this little peanut.
Six weeks from?
Uh, yeah, eight weeks from now I'll have bunnies again.
Okay. Well, keep me in the loop on it because my wife loves it. And we do one with the prunes and, I don't know what the hell. You know, there's a great recipe at, I'll find out the name for it. It's a Greek restaurant in Pentecost in for rabbit. And it's the best rabbit I've ever had, really.
I'll have to hit it up next time.
I can't drink it, yeah. I'm going to.
The rabbit pot pie at one of the Nelson restaurants too is to die for.
I wonder if I can get away with it, putting it on the menu.
Did I hear you say meat birds too?
Yeah, I've, I've been talking with Brenda Trent-Holm.
Yeah, okay.
We're back on speaking terms. And she, she's.
Well, unfortunately I won't be able to use the barn. Well, no, you know, it's got the, the bank above is slumping into it and, and pushing that wall in. But it looks really well-matched to me. I've been in barns that were way, way worse shape.
But do you know what would be really cool?
Like, I mean, I can see why she wants to dig her in there and pull the cellist and bring one more up. Okay, oh, you built the barn. I thought it looked well-built.
It's a matter of getting some other stuff.
Yeah. And spreading.
Because that's what I was thinking.
And it's actually been packed.
Okay, okay. Cracking, making noises. Yeah, no, I, I didn't. I looked at. Yeah, it's a perfect barn for horses and it could probably work for the goat. But I'm figuring out some other options at the moment. Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm going to pasture with them. And have them marching across her, her ground. And then whatever is. Chicken will be there. And all these guys come with big characters and I don't think seats. You know, there's a lot of great spots. I think that there's huge potential in the town. You know, for me, this is, right now, I'm, I'm in such privileged position that I have support from, from family and friends to actually do this. It's like in business, there's a huge loss in the beginning. You're putting in all this time, you're putting in everything you own. And then there's, there's really no payback, not, not for a long time in the future. But there will be eventually, I'm, I'm sure of it. And when it does, as soon as I'm making some money at it, that's the only thing that's going to convince other young people to do it. Young people don't do anything unless there's money in it.
You know what, that whole, like, there's nothing I love better than going and feeding the chickens and cleaning out the horses stalls and, you know.
I'd order meat birds and rabbits.
Good for the soul. All right, I'll put you on the list.
Beating up the frigging round that, I don't know if you remember, Carmel and Brian had.
That one round.
Oh, he was a nasty dogger. He bombed me one day really good.
We had, when I was a kid, we had everything.
It's pretty cool. It's, you know what, it's, yeah, I just think it's such a neat thing.
I keep thinking about having.
It's good for the soul.
Oh, it is. So cool.
You keep thinking about having one, sir?
Laying down. But I'm, I have a cholesterol problem, so it's just the worst thing in the world. I mean.
It's actually, it's actually shown that it's, it's not an issue.
I know. They, you know, it's hard for me because I'm seeing some of that data now, the cholesterol. I still eat eggs, but I used to eat them every day. And we, we'd have boiled eggs in the fridge and the kids would take them as snacks and. I, I'm not kidding. I eat two, three a day myself. And, and I just don't think it's, I think I would feel it if it was bad.
We, we swap back to butter.
Oh, yeah. Margarine's way worse for you.
Yeah, we swap back to butter. Have you had that Amish butter that you buy down in, they actually have it in Caldwell? It's Amish butter with butter and it comes in a log?
Everyone loves good food.
It's like eating candy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you ever, if you ever need help, if you're ever going out of town, need someone to watch the animals for a weekend, let me know.
I, I'll do that.
I'll feed your meat birds. You know, they're ugly, fat ones.
They are going to be the ugly, fat ones. Yeah, they're just, they're ugly birds.
Oh, yeah, they're a tough one. Okay, see ya. Okay, see ya.
Hey. What you up to?
What kind of food?
Oh, okay, is mom home? No, she's out, eh, okay. Um, make sure you guys clean up after yourselves too, sweetie pie, please. Yeah, you know, and may- maybe you can do a little extra, tell Toby that too. You know, like this morning, we got up- What's that? Okay, just like this morning, we got up in the, um, um, the goldfish, you know, they have a bag of, we're just throwing them on the counter and stuff. Okay, well. Okay, well, let's just tidy up after ourselves. Okay.
I don't, I don't.
Is that my drink?
No, you don't drink tea, Bill.
Oh, my God, tea, oh, it would kill me.
Nice color. Okay, so, yeah, the color of the night, eh?
I like this color.
Ah, this is not the right one. Oh, remote controls, you need them.
I know, I'm, yeah.
So as soon as we get that to turn on, give us a minute to warm up and then-
Okay.
So I'll try to time it so we're all kind of-
Ready to go.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's gonna show up for our public hearing, so.
Well, probably not.
It's not crucial. Public hearing. Just a zoning bylaw change.
Well, just, I was a city planner, sometimes they-
No, it's about, it's about, um, roof eaves. So it's just a language of how much, um, taking up of the parcel you-
Oh, okay, I see, sorry.
Just a wording correction, basically.
Okay.
So, it's not very big.
Am I sure about the building?
In those eaves, you're probably not really concerned about it. Not one of those contentious, all-night-long public hearings.
Backstory building or whatever.
Yeah, exa- yeah. Yeah, the high-rise hasn't come yet.
Steve, hello, I'm fine. Got a good chair for you or anything?
Evening, Dwight.
Sure.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Uh, I've got a scoop for you. Hot off the press, straight from the trial council meeting.
They didn't need anybody to put wine on it.
Uh, twenty-five dollars per two hundred residents. They're giving twenty-five dollars towards the trial.
What about the second one?
Yep, to help with the second one. I don't care about that, and we actually really would prefer to encourage the first one.
I was gonna suggest here, twenty-five for the first, twenty, and then seventy-five for the second. But I think, you look at Rosslyn, I think-
A hundred bucks per person? Where's that money coming from?
From your reserve. He'll kill you.
Yeah, but we're also using that for doing energy audits on our buildings.
That's fine. You know, I think that you get a, you get a hundred people tossed in.
Yeah, of course, not in the chair of the board.
Why should we make, make it, make it less than that?
We're using, well, we use a budget of six thousand dollars to-
With the last, yeah. But it is for the first one, then?
Yeah, twenty-five for the first one, yeah. That's what we were, we, you know, we said yes on the bill and nothing.
Why did you not think any, if it was the one, would you not do something?
Um, I can't find my notes, but I still carefully took some care of it. Um, she just thought that it should really sort of encourage people to- Yeah. It's on my mind.
Did you get it?
I found it. See the junkies gone there?
What's that?
See the junkie has them there?
Oh, I know. Yeah. Well, look for my fish.
What, is it a drawer?
Yeah, it's got all kinds of stuff.
Where would he have used the horse for a really long time?
It's got the horse.
You know that's where the horse is. When you bring it into the ground, it-
Yeah, but this is not-
Jesus, yeah, I mean, I like this thing.
Yeah, that's good, where's the, where's the, that was easy one.
There's the horse.
Is that one still there? Would that even work?
Is that still working?
Oh, yeah, oh, my God. Yep, now that moved back to, into the back office, I don't get in here and say this is a-
Oh. So you're needed in this time.
That's right. Yeah. So I can get a lot more done.
Yeah, that's-
Well, they can use the reserve to do everything.
Okay.
Oh, um, Kathy, have you received anything to tourism or something about that, um, letter to?
Oh, just be transit, yes, I did receive a copy of their letter.
Okay, and then?
You do?
Um, well, I, I received the draft, I went to the meeting, and then I said, you know, too much, and I talked to Kathy all of the focus first. What did they ask, or your input on it?
To do the audit, well-
How was it introduced here, or dismissed you?
Um, I just had a couple of chats with Deanne, I talked to her on the phone. I mean, I, I kind of said, what do you expect council to do? So that's what I explained, you know. If you want council that, then bring it forward, because, you know, other than that, it's-
So, did, um, she say she was going to send it? Oh, I read she had it. Oh, she was, she, was she foretalking to you or after?
No, no, I, I got a copy and I did give her my comments early.
Hi. Hello?
How are you?
Good.
I was trying to explain it. No, no, it's straight and out. Yeah, I thought I'd go, yeah. For sending you or city council say.
I'm happy.
I always say, you know, partners, one way or another, no, for the shore. Yeah. But you're, yeah, but what?
BC200.
Going to a partnership like that, and they're, with any private-
About enough savings warrants that based on-
Just, like, because that's what Reddison pushed the front of, yes.
Because you're a partner. They have that, etc.
Because then they have a guarantee of seven percent.
Public assessment.
And then the private, the partner, well, BC200.
Um, yeah, third and final reading of the bylaw, those have to be separate motions, the third reading-
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Till the end anyways. It's probably, I think, you, they probably have a lot to do.
Oh, well, yeah.
I mean, that, that is another part of it.
Yeah, because I think that'd be a big, big-
Joint regional, yeah. How to change things about the impact.
So the, the, we didn't use some of the-
No.
The weaker stuff with the doubt. Um, did you, were you okay with your sending that? Did you have comment, a thought there, or did you agree with the nomination, or?
Probably always.
Because I don't know. In that, in that week, we wanted to hear.
What do you know, what?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, but it's not sure. Before I begin to the east end and start across, let's see if we can be able, I mean, with council, it's hard.
Right. You know, go from, I mean, maybe she wants the number ahead, I'm just doing the, five, one, then the five, one, then again, last year. The, um, yeah, that letter was mostly just, uh, you know, basing a decision on the stock, which is curious, like, about when you see it. And I said, well, you know, okay, if he wants, like, there was a big report, I would make it. But it's, well, certain to make it back.
Yeah, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Public hearing of the zoning amendment bylaw number twenty-five fifty-three. Purpose of the public hearing is to amend the definition of building parcel coverage to limit the amount of roof eaves on a structure to six point six meters and provide a consistent development footprint within a neighborhood. As building parcel coverage is also defined as density in the bylaw, there is a risk that a develop, development footprint could therefore circumvent a critical feature of the zoning bylaw. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section eight ninety of the Local Government Act in order to consider proposed zoning amendment bylaw number twenty-five fifty-three. At this public hearing, any person who, who, present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given an opportunity to be heard on the matters contained in the proposed bylaw. However, it is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict remarks to matters contained in the bylaw, and it is my responsibility as chair of this meeting to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should, at the appropriate time, convince your, your address to the council by clearly stating your name and address. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Members of council may, if they so wish, ask questions of you considering your, following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw of individual citizens. Everyone who deems their interest in property to be affected shall be given the opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one shall be, or should feel discouraged to prevent it from making their views known. After this public hearing has concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. During the course of a public hearing, people sometimes tend to become too enthusiastic or emotional. Regardless of whether you favor or oppose any particular applicant or argument, please refrain from applause or your expression of emotion. Restraint enables others whose views may, or may not coincide with your own to exercise their right to express their views and enable all views expressed to be heard in a partial form as possible.
Your worship, I'd like to report that the notice was published in the May sixteenth and May twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen editions of the Roslin News, and was also posted on the City Bulletin Board and website since May fourteenth. We have not received any written submissions regarding this application.
Is there anybody in the gallery that's wished to address this bylaw? Is there anybody in the gallery that wishes to express interest? Once again, is there anybody in the gallery? Seeing none? Because we're adjourned. Uh, regular meeting, call to order, regular meeting of the council for May twenty-seventh. Basic input, anybody in the gallery wish to address the council? Seeing none? Adoption of the agenda, motion to drop the agenda. Council ball is seconded by Council Spirit. Adoption, motion to adopt the council minutes of the regular council meeting held May thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Uh, petitions and delegations, delegation of the Neighborhood of Learning Committee.
Your worship, um, I'm sorry, we have the, we give it to Energy Task Force first.
Anoel's at the-
Oh, does it say?
Yeah, Anoel's there.
Neighborhood learning. Neighborhood of learning.
Your worship, the, uh, members of Neighborhood Learning delegation, I think they're on percent twenty-five. So I'm the only one of the three that's here at this moment. Could I suggest that the, uh, agenda be amended such that the delegation from the Rockland Energy Diet first?
We'll make that amendment. Energy Task Force, Energy Diet.
Flexibility.
A little different there.
Hope yours says, hope yours said the same.
Yeah, mine said.
It's a great challenge, a challenge for me, I know. See, our poster child.
Yes, poster children.
And Elori graciously accepted the challenge to be the poster child. So anyway, um, oh, up and down, okay. Well, good evening, uh, councillors, and, um, I'm Patricia Denal with Board of Speaker. And I have with me tonight Steve Ash and Erin Causse with the, um, Roslin Sustainability Committee. Um, I'm back, I have to say, a personal note, it's kind of a full circle, circle, because I came, uh, in front of you in November to, on behalf of Community Energy Association, to give you the award for the, um, Roslin Energy Diet, the honorable mention for Climate and Action Energy Award. And, uh, since then, I have a new job, and I'm project manager for the Kootenai Energy Diet, which is based on the, um, Roslin Energy Diet pilot. So, thank you for having us this evening. Apologies to Counselor Wallace, who's heard me speak at the Regional District of Kootenai Boundary. And I know you're all very familiar with this, but it's really exciting to bring this to the Kootenais. Um, I'm gonna start with the background, which I know is, um, preaching to the choir here, but the Roslin Pilot Project is very successful. Um, it had been found that there was high average energy usage here, primarily the winter climate and the, um, hot, the oldest housing stock. So with the Roslin Energy Diet was a program to help overcome barriers and help people do energy efficiency upgrades to their homes. It was a very personalized, uh, program with Shelley Hasty as the ambassador here, helping people through the process. And, um, partnership formed with, of course, the City of Roslin and the Nelson and District Credit Union. And, uh, was the, able to provide the great, um, pilots for, uh, Kootenai Energy Diet. Uh, Roslin had twenty-two percent participation for phase one there. Um, eighty percent of the people, uh, completed improvements in their homes. Apparently, one point six million dollars was spent in the local economy in the middle of that winter. Uh, and we've heard that about three hundred and forty tons of greenhouse gas emissions were saved in your community. And, um, that's a picture of the, uh, Roslin, well, you were probably all there. But, uh, it was the, um, the launch for the Roslin Energy Diet, and we plan to recreate that, uh, on June twelfth. That, the Roslin, um, Minor Hall to, uh, launch phase two, or the Kootenai Energy Diet. Uh, this lady, and I've been told it's Tana Shippey, but it's not. Tara House, yes, because someone said they were Tana Shippey's, um, sister-in-law, and that was, so, okay, thank you, Tara House. So she's very happy participant in the, um, in the Roslin Energy Diet. She's, apparently, her bills were higher than her mortgage, uh, for energy. Uh, went from six hundred dollars and after do, a month after doing all her upgrades, she's spending about a hundred and fifty dollars on energy now. Uh, she's really reporting a much more comfortable home. Um, and, uh, she accessed, um, rebates, she did lots of insulation, she did a lot of, um, things to her home, but her inner guide rating went from in the thirties to seventy-seven, which is sort of what a new home hat is now. So, very pleased. Roslin Energy Diet, except, uh, received international and local attention. My, um, boss, Carol Suhan, whom you all know- My boss Carol Suhan, whom you all know, spoke about it in Barclay and somewhere else in the States, so international attention, award-winning, as I've already told you, I personally brought the award, we brought the award, and so replicated Kootenai-wide. So thank you to our partners, NR CAM, LiveSmart BC, Columbia Basin Trust, that are helping to bring Kootenai Energy Diet, and also the five credit unions in the Kootenais are all partnering to provide, so you can go into any one of these and get a low-interest, long-emeritized, unsecured loan to finance any of your energy efficiency upgrades, to try to help remove some of the barriers of cost. And the project area this time is anything, anyone in the Kootenai Boundary or the Central Kootenai Regional District, and in the Fortis BC Electric Service area, so that does exclude some of the RDCK communities, but everyone in RDKB, certainly in Roslyn. Now, what is it, Kootenai Energy Diet this time? It'll be $60 for an energy assessment. Somebody will come to your home, and once he's signed on with us, and gives you an intense assessment of your home, goes through all the spaces, and you'll get an energuide rating afterwards, and a listing of all the potential things you can do in your home. He'll also install five free CFL light bulbs, a low-flow showerhead, a kitchen-tap aerator, and some pipe insulation, so you can start saving hot water energy right away, as soon as he's been there. You'll have access to about $4,000 in LiveSmart BC incentives, also $2,000 in Fortis BC rebates, and there will be, in order to access the LiveSmart BC incentive, you will have to have a post-assessment done for $150 next year by March of 2014. So to participate and receive the LiveSmart incentives, you need to do all your work by the end of this year, December 31st. Program features, again, we've talked about the loan, and thank you to our credit union partners. We will be having kickoff and information sessions in every community. We've tried to phase it so that the assessments are kind of working in a geographical order, so Trail and Roslyn area will be in June and July. And these are, we're calling them interventions, the Roslyn Miner's Hall on June 12th is when the Roslyn Trade Show and Community Launch will be, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. But you can attend, you actually are allowed to attend any of these events, I'm signing up at any of these events, throughout the area. There also will be local, the Energy Ambassador, Shelley Hasty, will be around the area, so if you have any Roslyn community events that you'd like to invite us to, we will certainly be there. Unfortunately, Shelley won't be able to do office hours like she did last time, but we are able to sign you up online for any of these events. So, thank you, that's, this is the end of my, this is my last slide, what I'm asking you, and I think perhaps my partners will say a few words, but I'm here to ask you for a resolution to support Kootenai Energy Diet. I also need to bring up the Friendly Challenge, brought up by the city of Castlegar. Castlegar is providing $25 towards their first 50 inhabitants, or 50 residents of Castlegar. They're discounting that $60 energy assessment fee by 25 to the first 50. Grand Forks saw that challenge and doubled it, so Grand Forks is providing it to the first 100, and only moments ago, hot off the press, I was just in Trail, and Trail resolved to provide $25 to the first 100 residents of Trail signing up for the Kootenai Energy Diet. So I'm putting that out there, that perhaps that's something that you would like to consider. Just, I know you've already been spreading the word, you've got your posters up, we have brochures, and you're displaying them, and thank you. If you didn't participate personally in Phase One, here's your chance for Phase Two. That's how you reach us, that's how you sign on, energydiet@fortisbc.com, and thank you, and maybe I'll do some, and you know, the speed or...
Yeah, if I could just put a couple of things just in context, the Phase One was a huge success, which we all know about, and it was in large part because of the help of the city and the huge cooperation, it was a really great collaborative effort, it really was. And I think most people were impressed by the number of participants, and last time in Phase One, we had about 250 participants. Not all of those completed the work, but most did. And so really, the program impacted over 250, so it was somewhere between 250 to 300 homes in Roslyn, which, based on 1,400 homes, is one heck of an achievement. What we're kind of focusing for on Phase Two, because we're a bit different, because we've gone through effectively the Kootenai Energy Diet Phase One, now we're onto Phase Two, what we're focusing on, we've got some target groups, we're focusing on low-income homeowners, and they get a lot more assistance, and so we're going to be working with Fortis to identify those low-income people, because some people are a little bit reticent to come forward, so we want to try and make sure they know about it, that they get a free audit, and they get a number of other assistance through the program, so we want to make sure those people know about that. We're going to focus on seniors, because again, some of those people are being particularly hard-hit by the rapid increase in electrical energy prices, and some of those bills are now getting pretty high. And then the third group really is the high-volume users, so again, we're going to be working with Fortis to identify those people who have high bills, and therefore, the program can impact them, obviously, more than some other people. And then the final group is obviously people who missed Phase One, I mean, some people just weren't aware of it, and we got a lot of people coming to us afterwards saying, "Sorry, we missed Phase One, when's it coming again?", so obviously, we want to track those down. And then particularly landlords, because some of those are not in the area, so we've got to find ways of kind of contacting some of these groups. But if you think again of the 1,400 homes, and then if you think that we've done 250 to 300 in that kind of range, and then if we are able to attract another 150, we're starting to get up to a third of all the homes, and then you've got to also consider that, of those 1,400, there are a number, we don't know the exact number, that have been built in the last number of years, and obviously, therefore, their insulation standards are right up there. We're starting to get to, you know, a fairly small group that we won't be hitting. So I'll let Erin talk to this assistance that we'd like to see and support, but I first off would like to say that, you know, as sort of community leaders, any help you can give us in terms of talking this thing up, if you're talking to people or meeting with groups, if there are people there you think should, you know, apply, please encourage them to do so, because people sometimes are reluctant to do that, and if you're talking to people, encourage them to apply under the program, and let's see if we can't get our numbers up to a total of about 400, because then, at that participation rate, I'm sure we're going to be higher than any other community in the area. And being a kind of competitive person, I really want to make sure we do end up being the, having the best program compared to the other communities. Erin?
I have the unenviable task of coming before council, has just gone through budget deliberation and arguing for spending more money, but it's actually an easy argument. I sit on the Energy Task Force, we work with the planning departments on, among other things, the city's commitments under the Carbon Action Challenge, Climate Action Challenge. The city has to, in order to be eligible for CARE grants, come up with about 400 tons of offsets or reductions every year under those guidelines, the city has committed to that. You can do that in a number of ways. You can do that by buying offsets from the Pacific Carbon Trust, which is an outfit run out of Victoria, which, in my opinion, invests in, well, let's not get into my opinion of the quality of those offsets, but you're sending money out of the city, and you're spending about 25 bucks a ton on that. We're looking at other ways you can meet those commitments, but one of the ways you can do it is by creating offsets here in town, and that is by spending money as a city to reduce emissions outside of the corporate entity, for example, to reduce emissions in households in town. If we imagine that you're spending 25 bucks per participant in this program, and if we imagine that you're capping at 100, you're investing $2,500 once, one-time expenditure. The average expected rate of reduction of emissions per household that participates in this program, two and a half tons a year. So you're getting your offsets, even in the first year, at $10 a ton. Compare that to the $25 a ton that you would spend in the Pacific Carbon Trust, or compare it to even the $17 a ton that you were going to spend on the Darkwoods project, which really you don't want to get involved, but even that was a very cheap project. We're talking about almost half of that, just in the first year. But the reductions you get out of this program are in perpetuity. You're saving 2.5 tons every year in perpetuity, because you have increased the efficiency, energy efficiency of those households. The first phase of the Roslyn Energy Diet decreased, we don't have the final figures yet, but the estimate is over 300 tons. Remember, your target every year is 400 tons. So you're talking about an extremely cost-effective investment. If you had to buy those tons on a one-year basis at $25 a ton, you'd be spending over $6,000. You're spending once, $2,500, and you get them in perpetuity. So as I said, a tough challenge to come before you and ask you to spend money, but I think this is money wisely spent, and you don't have to go into the budget for it. Because we're not spending money on the Darkwoods project, we put that money instead into a carbon fund, I think you probably know this, and we've planted it, through the use of that fund, we're going to be seeking to become carbon-neutral, there's no better way to spend that fund, no more appropriate way to spend that fund, in my opinion, than by this kind of incentive program.
You should go on the sales.
Any questions for?
In the Climate Action Charter, I thought the main purpose was to reduce the corporate emissions of the municipality, so we'll still get the credit for this, community-wide?
Yeah, so there are two ways, there are two ways to meet the charter applications. One is by reducing the operational emissions, and we're working on that as a task force as well, so we're working on making audits of the city hall and arena, but you're never going to reduce them to zero, right? So what's left over, you have to make up by buying offsets, either from the Pacific Carbon Trust, or finding your own offsets within town. You'll never reduce operational emissions to zero, it's not going to happen, so you have to get them some up.
Okay, so we can still count these against that?
These are perfectly, in fact, there are different classes of offsets, there are four categories of offsets which are so straightforward that the CEO can sign off on them as having been legitimate and verified. This is one of them. There are other sort of wackier offsets that you have to get a third-party verify, it's expensive, it's complicated, you know, you might not want to go there. This is a really straightforward type of offset, it's delineated in the legislation setting up the Carbon Action Challenge very easily.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions?
I do. A couple of questions, rural areas, rural residents of the Kootenai Boundary, and this came up as a discussion at the Regional District Board, and you may have already heard it, but to make sure that the rural residents realize that they can also participate in this program, because all of the interventions are happening in municipalities. So I'm just putting that out there to make sure that the rural residents realize that they can participate as well. And the other question is, I believe you said that 80% of the people that register for the pilot program completed, so what about the 20% who did not? If they've already had an assessment done, can they use that assessment again and participate in this program?
Okay, so if you had your assessment done after April 2012, then you can participate in this program. If it was before, which I presume is probably a lot of the Roslyn Energy Diet participants, and it's because the LiveSmart grants have changed, is my layman's understanding of why you can't use that one. However, if you want to have a new energy assessment done, it will actually cost you $60 plus the $150 of the LiveSmart grant, towards the LiveSmart, because LiveSmart has already provided it to you once, and I'm sorry, but that's how, so yes, for $210, you can re-enter and get a new energy assessment, but I will say, the only reason you'll, with your old energy assessment, you still got your list of what you should be working towards, so unless you want to access a LiveSmart grant that you haven't accessed for, I'm not sure that you really need to have a second first energy assessment, if you know what I mean, I mean, you can, so, it's a little, it's a little sort of fuzzy in my own brain, but I do know that April 1st, 2012 is a key date for the pre-energy assessment, for Live, to do with the LiveSmart funding.
Thank you.
Clear as much? Okay, good.
Anything further? Thank you very much.
Thank you, hope to see you. The intervention, and good comment on the round.
Delegation from the Neighborhood of Learning.
It feels like deja vu to you, me as well. We're conscious of the fact that we haven't been before you in a long time, explaining exactly what we're up to, and we've been up to some interesting things, so we thought we would come by and let you know what's going on with Neighborhood of Learning. As you may know, after the school's decision, we split ourselves into two task forces, one devoted to trying to find a short-term solution, independent DL school if you're here in Roslyn come September, and the other more long-term solution, trying to find a public K-12 solution for Roslyn. So what you're going to get tonight is a report of those two task forces, just for your information only, to let you know what we're up to, and Christine will start with the independent DL.
Hi, so in case you didn't hear, Erin, my name's Christine, and I'm part of the task force that's focusing on the short- to medium-term solution. So basically, we're looking to fill the gap in K-12 education in Roslyn, while Erin and his task force work on the more medium-to-long-term goal of a publicly, or a public district, municipally-run district. So specifically, we're looking to open a school come September that fills the needs of Roslyn grade 10 to 12 students, which is not being provided by ST20 at the moment. Our goals are to make this school accessible to anybody and everybody who wishes to take part in it, and one of the ways we're looking to do that is get some outside forms of income like international students, grants, independent sponsors, and things like that. So the first of two options for September is an independent school, we've sort of coined it the "go it alone", so we would start our own independent school come September. We did submit our application, and it was approved, for a Group Three independent school, which is specifically outlined what that means in your handout, I won't get into the grouping and what they mean at the moment. So it is the most labor-intensive option that we have. However, the independent school inspector was quite excited at the application and the method of education that we would be providing under this form. We do need to decide by May 31st if we're going to continue along this line of the independent school. The second option is partnering with a DL or distributed learning school or district. We're considering both public or independent districts and schools out there in the province. We did send out a request for proposals in April, and we received some back from both the independent and the public options. We're in the midst of negotiating with Three. The independent options give us a lot more flexibility, but less provincial funding to our partner. The public option, there's a lot more contracts and less flexibility there, but they... but they receive more public funding directly from the Ministry of Education with that option. In the short term, as far as the location goes for this school, we have secured and had inspections done on this ski lodge, which they have approved our use of, until their operations start late November, early December. So we do have other locations that we can pursue, but we can't really narrow down any of those until we know registration numbers. So if that doesn't get put in place by September, we at least have an interim location until we can move into the new place. Either way, we're looking for a personalized learning format in a blended environment, so it's similar to what was seen at RSS for grade 10 to 12 this year. It's going to have a lot of opportunities for engaged, relevant, and experiential learning. We're not pursuing a pure DL format. It's definitely a blended environment with teachers' face-to-face environment. The tuition, no matter which option we're looking at, for local students, we're looking at roughly 500 to 1,000 per kid per year. And looking at putting in place some scholarships, some corporate scholarships, for household, household income warrants if they can't support those fees. So we truly are trying to make all of these options accessible to anybody who wishes to take use.
My update is nowhere near as exciting as that. I'm on the task force that measures its progress in geological terms. And it's important to understand that the two task forces are complementary, all right? This is what's happening right now. Our long-term objective in NOL is to have public education, because we do not want a system where some people can afford education here in Roseland and some can't. We want a public system. We've narrowed our options, and so while these guys are pursuing the short-term option, we are pursuing a more long-term option that we have narrowed down to looking at a municipal school district for Roseland. It's important to understand that there have been no precedents for a municipal school district anywhere in Canada. Although we have districts like Levelstoke, which are in effect a municipal school district. We have only one city, and it's the school district that operates there. There is nothing defined as a municipal school district in legislation. And so we're looking at a long-term process of trying to get bureaucrats within the Ministry of Education, or elected to push for change, to push for change that will be difficult for them and painful. But we think we can sell them on the idea. So our short-term objective is to try to get in front of the minister and deputy minister to make our pitch for a municipal school district for Roseland. The, just to set it straight, what we're talking about here is not you guys running a school as well as running a city, okay? A municipal school district is not significantly different than a regular school district. You have geographical boundaries, you have a board of trustees, which runs the operations of the thing, you have staff working under them. Board of trustees reports to and takes direction from the ministry. The word municipal justifies the geographical boundary. It does not define the responsibility of council to manage the school. Although I would expect that if we do create a municipal school district, one of the benefits will be that there is good collaboration and interaction between city council and school. But there is no responsibility involved in a municipal school district that rests on council. So the update on where we are. Pre-election, our strategy was to try to make the case, and it was a long shot at best, that it would be politically advantageous for the incumbents to propose the idea of a municipal school district, not just for Roseland, but as a solution to a number of small rural districts which are losing their schools. And trying to sell that as politically popular, something that could be tossed out pre-election. Well, we didn't succeed at that, obviously, but we knew it was a long shot. But in the process of doing that, we've had good communication with, to some extent, the minister, but more intensively, the deputy minister and the ADM in the Ministry of Education. That's all on hold for the moment, because post-election, we're going to probably see a shuffle of the minister. Usually, you'll see a shuffle of the senior bureaucrats as well, so the ADM that we've built up that great relationship with may not be there another month. So he's told us to cool our heels for a while, and that's what we're doing. In the meantime, we're doing research on other models that we can use to make our arguments for the efficacy of the municipal school district. While it hasn't ever been used in Canada, it's used extensively in the States. With some good and some unfortunate results, we're hoping to take the good and avoid the unfortunate. But the more research we can do on where this has been done before, the better equipped we are to sit down before the premier and the senior bureaucrats and make our pitch. So we'll start badgering them again come July. And we expect it to be a couple of years at least of pushing before we can get this done. But we're confident we can make a case to these guys that they can not only save money, but also do something that's politically popular in a number of rural writings, given the fact that we've had so many school closures in B.C. So we're just looking to get our shot to make that case, and I think we eventually will. I want to close by saying again, the efforts that we're doing in the two task forces are complementary. These guys are working on the really interesting, important stuff. We are the patient task force. It's sort of like the rabbit in the air. I think we're going to win.
Any questions, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I have a couple. I noticed in the material, you mentioned the concept of joining with another different school board, school district. And then you said that you weren't actually pursuing that. Is there a reason for that?
We're focusing on the municipal school district. There still is a possibility that we could manage to redraw boundaries. It is a little bit of a long shot. Partly because we've got to make the case to the school district that we would be joining, that that's a good idea for them. Partly because we've been told by the ministry that they've closed the loophole whereby that can be done to your advantage. So there are some, the funding rules for a school district involve, as you know, some riders that give you extra money if you have to travel a distance or go on a ferry. And there are all these different provisions. And there was a loophole that allowed you to redraw boundaries. So we could draw a boundary with the Victoria School District and say how far we are from, you know, and so you should fund us at $20,000 a student. That's been closed. And they're frowning on the idea of that kind of amalgamation in order to get more money. And really, one of the reasons we want to do it is in order to get more money. Another is because we don't, we haven't, up to this point, worked as well as we would like to with SD20. But that's not seen as a legitimate reason to do that kind of redrawing in the eyes of the ministry. So we've got to come up with something. All of which is to say, that's not off the table. We're still exploring that. But we're pretty more focused on the idea of a municipal school district.
Okay, that makes sense. And I have a couple of specific ones that may be more to you, Kristy. Have you polled the local community now that the whole K-12 issue with SD20 has kind of turned to dust? And talked to what families are really serious about keeping their kids here versus sending them down the hill? Do we have any kind of rough numbers of how many people might be joining this, your enterprise?
Yeah, it's come up in pretty much every meeting is how to take this to the public right now when we don't have concrete answers yet.
Right.
And because it's still changing and morphing daily, what we are looking to provide. So unofficially, there's been chit-chat and updates and polling going on. But officially, no, not yet. So these, with the May 31st deadline on the independent school and the negotiations in progress with the DL partners, best guess would be that we'll be on our way to an agreement, if that's the way we go, or to a decision on the independent by, I'd have to guess, end of next week. So we, because the timelines have been so short, the hope has been that we go to the public when we have something concrete. There was a lot of polling done in the initial NOL surveys and all those informational meetings that happened with SD20. And so we've used a lot of that information, moving forward. And then, of course, when we're looking at the partnerships, we're looking at how we can operate it with a big variety of enrollment numbers, anywhere from 25 to 125 kids. With the idea that we can make it go for any of those numbers. So again, we're making it accessible to anybody who chooses.
Okay, and then my last question is, I don't know how attracting international students work. I don't know if they enroll nine months ahead of time, or, I mean, so my question is, is it feasible to even expect that you might be able to attract international students when you're maybe not putting something out to them until June or July?
Well, actually, it's handy because I do the international recruitment for the academy. And we do have students enrolled already for next year. Now I clearly have to go back to them with an update. And that's been a balancing act. Because when they did enroll, it was a while ago, and things have changed since then. However, knowing the students specifically and the families, I'm pretty confident that they'll all continue to maintain enrolled. And that was only focusing on athletes. Because in the past, as you know, the district did their own international program, and I handled the recruitment for only the athletes on the academy side. So realistic to get non-athletic kids for next year in addition to the ones we were expecting. Potentially a couple, but no great numbers for next year. But we will have the approximately 10 international students on the athletic side, and potentially we get a couple more. And then the recruitment happens in September, October, November time for the following year. So we will be well set up to recruit in September for the following year to all international students, not only athletic students. So it'll broaden our horizons there quite significantly.
Could I just add to that? I had, I talked to the international coordinator for the Nelson School District while we were researching this stuff. And got the history of how they managed to be so successful in it. Started with one Japanese kid that phoned up and said, "We'd like to go to your, I'd like to go to your school." And I said, "Well, if you could do that." And checked into the regulations, found out it was actually a moneymaker for some districts on the Lower Main Line. So they had started doing this, and within a couple of years, had eight international students. Decided that they should stop running off the side of somebody's desk and appoint an actual designated coordinator, like we have now, and give that coordinator a budget and some logistical support. Within two years, she had bumped the program up to over 50 international students, right? It's the kind of thing you can do if you've got a good draw, as we do here, as Nelson does. It's a great natural setting. And you've got somebody who is dedicated to the job, who's good at it. And who has a budget, right? Up to this point, if I can speak bluntly, the school district has not been entirely supportive with the budget for marketing and outreach. And if you do that, you don't get the business. One of the exciting things about running the school on our own is that we will get the business.
The other exciting thing about that too is that the academy itself has had a grant that was given to them in the amount of $45,000 that covered three years. And so we're just completing the second year. And those $15,000 per year have to go directly to marketing to international students because CITIT or Southern Interior Development, or... Southern Interior Development, and some trust. Saw the value of diversifying the local economy with international students because the heavy dollar amount that each international student brings to the community. And with, so we do have one more year of that. So next year, that CITIT grant will be in place, the marketing budget is secure. And that would just then be used for, again, such a small, little market I had to focus on in the past with high level of athleticism and force, snow sports. And also, the athletic program costs about double of what the pure ESL program costs. So I do already have agents in place. I have a low-cost recreational-only program, where you don't have to be highly athletic, but still make use of the ski hill and the mountain biking and such, as well as a straight ESL program. It's packaged, it's ready to go, agents are in place. So as soon as we have this, although it might not benefit us greatly next year, it certainly will the year after. And we'll start to see after that, the biggest restriction there is housing and home stays. And we've already started to investigate solutions on that, and there are some. So the opportunity to increase the international numbers that will support locals is, there's a lot of potential.
Good, thank you.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Hi, thank you for the work you do, by the way. So the academy programs, how does that tie into it? Because you're saying athletic students, so that's, to me, you're talking academy, but are not the academy programs, is there an ownership of?
No, the academy had a decision to make whether or not, because the academy was greatly affected by these school changes as well. And so the academy had a decision to make whether we were going to just go out on our own and do something, or whether we were going to align ourselves with NOL's initiatives to be part of a greater community goal and greater community school. And the board of the academy decided that they would align themselves with NOL. So we have now partnered up, our board is supporting NOL in their mission for a municipally-run school.
Okay, great.
School district.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Okay, Erin, you had mentioned, I think it was, that it, a municipal school district ultimately would be cheaper for the province than what they're doing now. Can you just elaborate on that and just where the savings were coming from?
It's a, that's a good question, it gets to the heart of it. Because if we make a pitch to the province, there has to be something we can offer them that sounds good, that makes it worthwhile for them to actually go through the trouble of creating this new administrative entity. So the savings that we have in mind would come about because we could promise them, number one, we're a small district, we're going to have a volunteer board. You're not going to have to pay the board, you may pay expenses, but you won't pay the board. Number two, you are going to continue to have collaboration, as you do now, from the city. The city maintains Jubilee Park, the city does plowing for the school, you know, this kind of thing. So those kinds of civic collaboration, cost savings can come into effect. And number three, in our specific case, and we can make the pitch for this being a pilot case for future efforts, we believe that the blended learning model can actually be delivered more cost-effectively than the traditional model. And we've seen that in the year, just in the first year of operation here at RSS. You couldn't have run a traditional model school this last year with the budget they had. Couldn't have been done. Couldn't have offered all the courses needed. How'd they manage to do it? Because they used the budget. And that was the first year, you know? Get something like that polished and up and running, that cost-effect, cost-effectively, you've got quality education for less. So on all three of those counts, we can make the pitch to the ministry that they would be spending less money per student with an arrangement like this than they would be under a normal school district arrangement.
Anything further? Thank you very much. Information items. How's some work?
CMG.
Mr. Fisher? How's your lead?
D.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Markup tool's still not working, so come back and say.
How's her script?
Yeah, I think I'm already covered, I think it's...
Okay, C.
C, okay, so that's the LCCDT letter to the mayors to attend the meeting on the energy report. And I just wanted to say, I think it was an excellent initiative by the LCCDT to get this report done and address the issue. And I'm really glad that our mayor is attending, because I think there's important information included in that, and that a united report, a united effort by all the mayors in the area might actually have some results to get our prices a bit lower when they look at some of these things. I think the background conclusion that the residential rates were higher, you know, is something that needed to be, needed to be brought out, and that it's important that everybody appreciate that. And also, that there are two issues there that really can be dealt with politically and should be to make it a level playing field. And the first one is that BC Hydro's delayed needed improvements. But when they go forward and put their improvements in, we're all going to pay for that. Meanwhile, we've already, as Fortis customers, we've already paid for those improvements ourselves. So by getting a political solution to that, where maybe the Fortis customers are somehow exempt from those charges, if that can happen, would be really great. And the other thing, just to have them really examine the rates charged by BC Hydro to Fortis for, you know, when they buy the energy through that, and then that might not be fair. And that's another good thing to look at. So I think it was really important that that got brought out. And I think LCCDT did a great job bringing that forward. So that's basically it on that one.
D.
That was me. So these are the minutes of the chamber meeting, most recent. I was working the polls that day, so I wasn't able to attend. But what is brought up here about the 2013 Open to Business Awards. So that's the grant application we've discussed lately in members' reports. And they passed the motion in the chamber meeting to work with the city on putting together. So they've, you know, allocated some of Renee's time to do this. So I can either now, or in my members' report, I guess, put forward a motion to allocate some of staff's time to help Renee review this application, or?
I don't know.
I'm going to do that right now?
Yep.
So maybe through you, who you worship to staff, maybe I could hear what Ms. Butler thinks would be best to do on that as far as putting out with the chambers?
You worship to council, I have spoken with Renee and let her know that if she takes lead on this, we'd be more than happy to help her wherever she needs a little bit of help. But that our time is limited to actually putting an application... help, but that our time is limited to actually putting an application together.
Yeah, okay. And so do you need to hear a motion, do you need a motion of counsel to move forward on that, or to that extent that you just stated that you're going to be helping Renee, can we just leave it at that and it just happens?
You worship, that would depend on how much time Renee has requested.
So we put it through a motion, we don't, we can't, we can't, don't want to commit staff time through a motion.
Well, I mean, we don't want to know more time than they are comfortable putting forward. You're right, you're correct. We wouldn't want to do that.
Counsel Moore.
That's a good question. On the previous application we put in that staff did, and it was a huge application, it was for the Small Business Friendly Award, which we won, right? That application had, covered a lot of the same material that this one has, because I looked at this application, I thought, wow, that really sounds a lot like the other one. So if Renee has a copy of that, she can probably do a lot of that work.
Worship, we've already supplied her with that, and I really don't expect it to take much more than that. I think we'll just see a few questions here and there, but staff is happy as long as she takes the lead to do that, and I think that's clear with Renee now.
So I don't think, so I don't think a motion would be...
Okay, if you don't think so, I'm happy to go without.
Yeah, if it became an issue, we would like it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Renee, Renee and I have talked about this, how it exactly would happen, and yeah, basically, I've looked at the questions on this application, they are fairly, I mean, there are very many of them, and they're fairly straightforward, and I think the, although I never looked closely at the, I wasn't on council back when the other application came about, but just from what I did look into at the time, it does sound like there's a lot of statements there. So ultimately, it would just be for staff to review, fill in a few holes, and then, you know, present to council or whatever. Is that, sound good?
If you're further on D. G.
G, that was the LCI Business Retention and Expansion Report, which was a really good report, and I appreciate staff sending out the whole thing, and I haven't read the whole thing now, but the first 22 pages that were in our packet were really good. And the thing I noticed about it was that it emphasized, I mean, it's an independent document, but it emphasized a number of the actions that are currently underway with the LCI and the LCCDT, and I thought I would just mention a couple of them because that report talks about a number of businesses wanting to expand but don't know where to go, and the LCIC has created the industrial lands inventory and can serve as sort of a central location to sort of get people together to, you know, people who are looking for land to know what's out there. And the LCCDT, Metallurgy Committee, and CAST, and TECH had just hosted this recent seminar encouraging creation of local sources for suppliers, because that was another thing that was brought up about the need for, in this area, for the businesses that are here to try and get more of their supplies, source them locally as opposed to, you know, being here but getting their supplies outside, just to strengthen our economy. And this session, which was attended by over 45 people, was doing exactly that, so that was pretty cool. And the other thing, talking about recruitment and retention challenges, and the report itself is a good tool to assess the situation, because before you can figure out what you need to do, you need to know sort of what you've got and where the gaps are, is doing that. And same with succession and business planning, they mentioned that, that that's a need in the community, a lot of businesses don't do that. And I know our chamber, and perhaps Counseler Blumey can fill us in more on that, but I know they have some efforts coming up to do succession planning and business planning for that. So I thought that was, that was pretty good. And also, they talk about that training came up as a big need, that a lot of the businesses were saying they need training in sort of hosting hospitality and some of the other kind of soft things, not technical training or even trades training. And I got seen about that with the SC's idea to do the Innovative Education Center, and I thought that might be something that they could investigate too, where you bring in people to do seminars on, you know, good customer service and some of those softer skills. So I saw a little synergy there too. So anyway, I thought it was pretty great, and I'm looking forward to reading the rest of the report.
Counsel Wallace.
And they're doing, they're presenting the Business Retention and Expansion Program on Wednesday night at the presentation. So I think it's 7:00, 8:30.
Yeah, be great for everybody to go.
Anything further on G? Okay, moving on, bylaw.
We need a motion to receive.
Oh, sorry, that motion received items. Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Blumey. All in favor? She carried. Okay, motion to provide third, third reading for bylaw 2553. Counselor Moore.
Second.
Second, Counselor Wallace. Discussion, all in favor? Carry. Motion for final reading, bylaw 2553. Counselor Moore. Second, Counselor Spirit. Discussion. Question, all in favor? Carry.
We need that button, that was easy.
Members' reports. Counselor Spirit.
Oh, sure. I've got so much, hang on. I don't have a lot, a couple things. So what are the things that the neighborhood of, well, I'll just sort of wait, just sorry, I just didn't get my notes here, so I don't, okay. So I did have a Neighborhood of Learning meeting on the last few days, and so, of course, you just heard our two subcommittees or task forces update council, so I don't have to say anything about that because they did such an awesome job. One of the things that, the resolution around the CBT youth grant funding and the resolution that council passed, which stated that in conjunction with the city, the Neighborhood of Learning, and the Sustainability Commission would be the, basically the group that administers the program, and the funding is $100,000, it's $25,000 over four years. I need to, now, I'm not sure if that motion, okay, I'm a little bit confused, because we've already passed that motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what I need to do is, I need to, I need to rescind that motion, and, because the Sustainability Commission is not going to be part of that process, they're not interested in being part of that process, because we've kind of collaborated that it should be the Neighborhood of Learning Committee. So at our last meeting, the group decided that it's better if the Neighborhood of Learning Committee is the full committee looking after the CBT fund, youth, youth grant funding. And Erin Cosby, who is also part of Sustainability Commission, as well as the NOL, and their whole group, we had a, we had a lengthy discussion about it, and it was deemed that it would be a better if it was just the one entity, I mean, the city is going to have to administer it and be responsible for the liability, et cetera, but that the Neighborhood of Learning Committee would actually put out for the RFP, for the coordinator, or however we're going to set it up. And Michelle Dottemont, is that right? Yeah, Dottemont was at the meeting from CBT, and she had all kinds of suggestions around what other communities, do you remember when she came here? I don't know if you remember, but she, she talked about other communities, but she gave us all kinds of details about a lot of the communities in the basin and where they're at with first stage and second stage. So we need a motion from council that will allow the Neighborhood of Learning Committee to start the whole process and get, get us off the ground.
Can I...
So, yeah, go ahead, you're looking puzzled.
Well, I'm looking puzzled only because at the Sustainability Commission meeting, there was a little bit of a different, a different take on it, and so I'm wondering maybe the best thing to do would be to turn this to staff and let staff sort of, unless they see, or had the...
You worship to the counsel, it is my understanding that the Sustainability Commission meeting was prior to this meeting?
Yes.
And that this meeting is the one that's taking president?
Okay.
Over what's happening with funds. The resolution at the May 13th meeting, which was in your package, the portion that I believe we're looking at is the "And Further," that council authorizes staff to assist the Neighborhood of Learning Committee and the Sustainability Commission in administering and overseeing of the approved work plan for the community to direct to youth funds. I'm not quite sure how Counselor Spirit would like that reworded.
Yes. We can't amend that though, because we've carried it.
But I'm not necessarily wondering if it's needed, because all it's saying is that council already has to assist the Neighborhood of Learning Committee and the Sustainability Commission. So are we totally taking the Sustainability Commission out of it?
Well, that was the request from the meeting, and Erin Cosby was there, and we had that conversation and just thought that we would tighten it up so that it was clear. I mean, I'm fine with it as long as we understand that the Sustainability Commission is really not interested at this point for a number of reasons, right? I mean, we've just taken the manager position and put in some other things, right? And the NOL committee has committed through a lengthy discussion to saying we'll be willing to take over that role of exactly that, but without the Sustainability Commission title in there. So do we need to technically?
No, from, I mean, just, there's no layering, you're not going through one committee to another, it's an "and," it's not a, it's not a layer, it's an "and." So I don't think that that motion needs to be amended or anything needs to be done.
I'm agreeing.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as it's clear that that's what will transpire.
I'm okay with it too, as long, I guess, I just feel a little uncomfortable because, I mean, the fact that Erin was there is great, because he sits on both.
Yeah.
But there was, and I was going to go back and try and find the minutes of the Sustainability Commission, and I don't know where they are, it doesn't really matter, but I'd just rather leave it to staff to sort that out.
Yeah, and I think Erin brought forth that just, yeah, he felt that it would be better on behalf of Sustainability Commission that the NOL was just the entity to drive it, put it that way.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure it didn't go against some motion that was at the SC meeting, you know.
Counsel Wallace.
There were capacity issues within the NOL, that was the discussion that had been brought to us, and that's why it was being handed over to Sustainability Commission. So I'm just curious, the volunteers there feel that they're okay with this?
Yeah. Yeah, I think I can speak on behalf of the group, and, you know, the core of people that are within that group is pretty solid, and the thing is, is that we want to get it rolling and then get a coordinator hired, and then that coordinator won't be an NOL volunteer, right? And the whole funding formula allows you to put, more if you remember, to put, you know, as much as you want into a coordinator in the first year, and ongoing, but whatever that partnership between the operating costs and coordinator, you figure that out through the coordinator. And the kids, obviously, are engaged in the process, right?
I did find the motion that was passed at the Sustainability Commission, and it was resolved that Sustainability Commission recommends to council the creation of a new youth task force that will ask as, that will act as the managing entity regarding the CBT community-directed funds.
Yes, and so that was where the discussion came about, and rather than creating another task force, was felt that this group, the NOL, would take on that role as the task force.
Would it be worth making it official and having that in motion?
Yes, I know, that's what I thought.
You worship, the easiest thing to do is when those minutes of Sustainability, Sustainability Commission comes forward in probably, sometime one of the June meetings, we will just pass the recommendation to receive their motion except for that one motion, and then we'll just feed it, and that'll be the end of it.
Okay, so having said that, as far as, you know, how, how long that will take, will that hold up the process of getting on? Okay, we're all good. Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, no, I just have a couple things. Oh, I took a tour of the arena with Darren and Kathy Moore on that day, I'm not sure who else went. It was great, you know, it's been probably since my, beginning of my second term or something that I've had a tour. It was an eye-opener, there's no question. You know, we looked at the quality of the work that was done, and, you know, Darren just gave us a good tour, and we talked about this and that, and, you know, I was, I was surprised at the lack of quality in some of the work that was done, but I don't need to say anything further to that, I enjoyed the tour, and it was very helpful for me to visualize everything in the arena again, and the curly wrinkle, we went and looked at all of that, so, so that was good. What else do I have? Oh, I already mentioned the cigarette butt thing, so that's done. I had a, I had a question about the denial of the Canada Student Grant for our summer employees, and how does this impact our budget if it does at all, so that would be through to you, worship to staff.
We were denied.
We were denied. Sorry, in case you want to know.
You worship to the counsel, we often get denied for this, so we don't normally put it in, we just take it as a bonus if we get it, and it's usually only around $2,000 for the year.
That's what I, I presumed that it wasn't going to impact our student, our student employment for the summer.
No, it hasn't.
All right. That's really all I've got. I know that, I've been out on the trails a lot, and the trails have been really populated of late, so that's a good thing, of course, because we do invest some of our, our budget into the Trail Society, and it's always worthwhile. I don't think I have anything else of significance, thank you.
Counsel Wallace.
Okay, well, I have quite a bit, so I'm going to go through it quickly, and then if there's any questions, I can answer them. East End Services Committee was held on May 21st. There was a delegation from the Canadian Columbia River Forum Committee. This is a committee that was set up a number of years ago as, as a, to develop partnerships and information and knowledge regarding the upcoming Columbia River Treaty negotiations. So that was the original committee, it is still functional, and it's quite an interesting one, and once I, I should be receiving a PowerPoint presentation, I can send that through to council, and that would answer any, any further questions probably. There was also a delegation from an environmental consultant for tech, they are, they have done a Lower Columbia Ecosystem Management Plan, it's basically a remediation plan based on ecological risk assessment. And it's, they are extending it all the way through Nelson, so that's something that's coming, it's a long-term plan. You know, there's no real time, tight timeframe on remediation, but anyway, they are proceeding forward with that. The Lower Columbia Initiative did request a brainstorming session with the East End at some point as to what economic development delivery may look like in the East End, so that will be happening at some point in time. There was a request for a summer airshow at the Trail Regional Airport, it's to happen in late August. The East End did give some approval for it to happen, there were discussions about insurance and liability and et cetera. The person proposing to do it has a great deal of experience in putting on airshows, has been involved in the Abbotsford one, and has just recently moved to the area, so it will be open and free to the public, and hopefully that will actually happen. And there was an extension of the contract, the regional district staff have a, well, regional district has a contract with Red Baron Aircraft Repair, Inc., they do a bit of administrative support for the regional district staff in regard to certification and safety standards at the airport, so that was an extension of that contract. And the East End Committee just, we, we had a discussion regarding the relationship between the regional district East End Committee and the LCCDT, and also future of the economic development delivery. No decisions made, that discussion will be ongoing for a while, we'll see. Meeting of the West Cootney Boundary Regional Hospital District Board of Directors, it happened up in Caslow last week, we toured the Victorian Community Health Center. That health center was to lose its 24/7 emergency, whenever that was, last fall, I think. They have maintained it to this point. And one thing I would note in the, in the tours that we've done of these smaller hospitals in the region, the staffs become very creative under very difficult, you know, tight budgets and et cetera, and it's really interesting, some of the very innovative ideas come out, that come out of that situation. Anyway, it's, you know, as a member of the board, it's very interesting to see what they come up with. The board meeting, we received a report on public access to the information of the hospital board, it's a very good... It's a very good report, just showing how people can access information, access minutes, agendas, et cetera. And that's part of the recent agenda. I haven't sent that through yet. I'll try and get it in next week's info package. But once again, around the hospital table, the discussion arose about the restriction of the board's mandate. Because the board's mandate is about contribution to capital expenditures and that's it. But of course, operations comes, comes to us continually, whether it's patient complaints or whether it's staffing matters or et cetera. And, and it really does become a very difficult discussion around the table because you, because there is no elected body that is accountable to the public for operational matters of healthcare. Just a piece of the frustration there. Anyway, from the regional district board meeting, May 23rd, it was, well, we began first with the old Cooteney Boundary Regional Hospital Board. So this is the previous hospital board to the current one I was just speaking of. And it exists at this point to manage debt from many years ago. And I've discussed this previously, that there's no requisition for, for that service either this year or next year because of the sinking fund effect of the MFA debentures. And there may well be a surplus in that service at the end of 2014, which, at which point in time, there are a couple of options for the, the board to decide of what happens with those funds. But of course, with the regional district, funds must stay within a category. You can't, you can't move them from one place to another like a municipal council can. So it may well be that those funds are given back to tax pay and they get a debt attrition from that. And the regional district financial statements were returned, were received in a committee of the whole finance meeting and I will be receiving a bounded copy of that and I'll bring it to City Hall just for documents. Rural BC Project, which I've spoken about before, and they will be requesting a letter of support. They would like all individual municipalities to support that initiative, to request a, a rural strategy for the province, perhaps even an independent ministry for, basically to make sure that our rural communities are vulnerable into the future. But the regional district staff will put, will be supplying some sort of a framework and Director McGregor is very willing to come and present directly to council if requested. An interesting item is the Boundary Economic Development Committee has an idea for a visitors' info center in Rock Creek, which they are pursuing, so just so everyone knows. There's a BC Hydro presentation regarding water levels. It'll be happening in Castle Garden, June 11th. If anyone's interested, let me know. I can get you more information. And then there's the Columbia River Treaty Local Government Committee, which is a different committee than the one I spoke of earlier. Their final report should be available by the end of June and those are the local reps' recommendations to the province about how to proceed with, with those negotiations. I already mentioned the business retention session will be on May 29th at the Prestige. Oh, and then the CBT Board of Directors is coming to Prestige tomorrow. They tour their, their board of director meetings around and their public session is at four o'clock. And I was asked, it was passed on to me after a couple of others, but I'll be welcoming the, the board of directors and they asked that I just speak on current issues within Roseland, so I thought I'd talk about our street project and, and, you know, our infrastructure needs and that council has made the decision to make the next year a financial planning year for future considerations. So that's about that. Oh, do we need to make a resolution tonight regarding the Cooteney Energy Dive? A resolution of support?
Well, we probably should have.
I'm usually wait.
I mean, we, I know. It's, it's up to council though. We can wait the two weeks after a delegation or we can, I don't think there's a big question.
Your worship, it, that happened on 12th, the, our next meeting's the 10th, so it'll be up to council.
I'll get back.
I might as well prefer to wait until the 10th, so, and then we can either just come up with our own ideas in the meantime or they can come report to, give us a proposed number, I guess, or?
I was just talking about a letter, I was just talking about a resolution to support the project. That's your thought about it?
Okay.
Oh, is that gonna be a tough one?
No.
The money?
The offset.
I was just gonna talk about the money.
Okay. Well, let's wait for the gets over there.
Your worship, I think staff can just bring a report on June the 10th and with some recommendation. And then if council has other ideas, you can.
Sorry, can I, can you come back to me? Because I forgot one thing on my members' reports that I need to ask council, which is a resolution. And it's the biggest part right here, but for some reason I didn't see it. So the AKBLG conference that I attended for 2.4 days, as far as my workplace replacement goes, the billing out, the policy of council is $200 per day at this time to repay a replacement worker for myself when I attend a conference. And the costs for replacement worker have escalated, I'm not gonna say enormously, they have escalated or they've risen since that policy was put in place, which was, I don't know, three years ago or four years ago. So I need to ask council, I need to make a motion to council to cover $260.49 that will have to be paid out of my own pocket for that replacement worker because that was above and beyond the policy that we currently have. And I apologize for that because I only went for 2.4 days thinking that it would be covered. I've never gone to the AKBLG conference ever in the seven and a half years that I have been on council because I do go to the UBCM and I only go to the UBCM for two and a half days as well, well, three days. I never go to a full conference. So I'm asking council, I guess I just try and make the motion myself, that if council would so deem that I could be reimbursed for $260.49 to cover the cost of the replacement worker for when I went to the AKBLG conference. For those reasons, so I do need to, we have to make a resolution, so.
Counsel Wallace? Discussion?
I have a question. Based on our conference budget, which I think we never exceed, right? Can we just get a information update from staff about where we are with that? Does the budget have plenty of money in it or does this put us over budget in some way?
Your worship, to council, our biggest hit on that budget line item is UBCM. And I haven't, because I don't know who's going, who's not going. It is in Vancouver, so we all know the cost of that.
But I think historically, we have never got, we've never exceeded our conference budget, is what I'm trying to get, so to.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, anyway, that's one of the reasons I support this motion because it's still within our budget.
Well, at this point, I just, I don't have the policy in front of me. I don't really know what numbers you're talking about.
$200 per day for replacement worker, as far as the policy goes.
But I guess what I'm saying is I would prefer to have this coming for us at the next council meeting as an actual motion at that point in time, rather than just.
That's fine. Unless you have some.
I'm feeling very reactive about this one without any information sitting in front of me, basically, is what I'm trying to say.
Could I answer any of your queries?
Counsel.
So, yeah, just because it deals with money and I mean, you know, I totally get with the general, simple idea of it, but I was wondering, maybe we should, you know, take an extra little time and have staff come to us with a report, either that we make, you know, an official change? Because it sounds like if it, if it's happened in this situation, then maybe we need to look at making an official change to that policy and, and, you know, and then we can say, right, right, right.
Well, definitely, you know, for, for the future, the policy, you know, I, you know, I would, you know, not tonight, but make a motion to the fact that we definitely bring the policy back or staff brings it back and we look at the policy. I'm one of, one out of the whole council who is in this situation, I think, other than if Tim wanted to go and had to have a replacement worker, right? So I'm not making excuses or anything, I'm just saying, these are the facts. So, yeah, I mean, if you want to wait on that, then that's, that's your prerogative for sure.
Counsel Fisher?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, the staff's gonna verify the expense report coming from the school. It's not gonna be, say, you owe me 250 bucks. I mean, they're gonna have it right there. And we have a budget for it. I think we're fine.
Your worship, the policy reads $200 a day to a maximum of five days in any year.
Maximum five days.
So it should be clearly counseled that the total bill that we got from the school, although it's for 2.4 days, is 700 and some dollars.
And according to our policy, only 480 dollars of that would be covered.
Right.
So councilor Spire is asking for that.
I, I don't have any problem with approving that tonight, but I think our policy should be updated because of inflation, cost of, the cost of getting replacement workers, it's just gonna keep going up, so that, that policy should be updated to reflect the, the new, new pace, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, personally, it's like, all right, I drove over there, I don't put in mileage, right? So I'll put in mileage next time and give it to council. I mean, it's, it's a little silly, we're within our budget and it's important, I think it's important for all of us to be able to attend these conferences. Her attendance there was, was valuable. I'm sure she learned a lot, she contributed a lot. So, you know, to be, to be quibbling over this because she has to work and I don't is, you know, I think, yeah, let's do it and make sure we can, you know, maybe we need to look at our conference policy overall and make some changes to that, but. Yeah, not today, not today.
So we have a motion? Any further discussion? No?
Well, what is the motion exactly? I'm sorry.
Motion is by Counsel Spire and my counsel, more about the council approved the expenditure of an additional $260.49 over the allocated $200 per day under policy number, I have to look that up, sorry, for replacement worker for councilor Spire's attendance at the AKBLG convention.
Okay, so the total decision right now is $260.
That's correct. That's not changing.
I didn't round that because I have nothing in front of me.
Oh, sorry, I did say it, but I, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
This is came to me on email.
All in favor? Carrie? Counsel Blumi?
Well, the broadband task force is hard at work at putting together the CITIC grants and the WD grants, the Western.
Versification?
That was just initial stages. The CITIC grant is almost done and we've sent out the letter of intent through email and Survey Monkey. And then we've also kind of, I don't know, put together a version, which is basically the same thing as the email and Survey Monkey for Facebook. And we have a hard copy version to facilitate, I don't know, just in-person conversations on the matter. We can just give them the hard copy. Here it is now. So we've been getting pretty, I don't actually know what the running tally is right now, but quite a few requests came in by the weekend, so there's a lot of interest in giving a feedback on that. Let's see what I've got. Oh, and I wanted to say too that Mark Howa, the COO of CBBC, the Broadband Corporation, did get the extension for our board of schools until the end of the month, for June 30th. So that's why we'll be bringing up the broadband question to council on, on June 10th instead of tonight. We were allowed that extra time. So I'm just reviewing it. Not with it.
Counsel Ray? Counsel Martin?
Okay, a few things. Attended the SC meeting and it was an interesting meeting, predominantly spent on discussing the transition, but there were a number of other things, but the minutes will be coming out to council, so I won't go into the details of them there. But it was well-attended by staff, which was greatly appreciated by the SC. And I think everybody's feeling positive about the transition going forward, that it'll, it'll, it can work to everyone's benefit, so that was good. Also, I attended the LCCDT meeting and that was a presentation on the business retention and expansion report, which I don't know if it's gonna be the same presentation that'll be this week at the Prestige, but in any case, it was really interesting, so I hope, I hope you go, whatever, whatever they're gonna talk about. That meeting, spent a fair amount of time talking about reorganizing economic development now that the LC, LCIC is not being funded and they're looking at for ways to go forward and still provide economic development for the region. That's a good thing. And I'll have, Counsel Spire mentioned, I too attended the arena tour and that was interesting. I had a comment on the declassification of in-camera material and I would suggest that it would be very helpful to the public if we could add the meeting, the meeting minutes once they've been declassified on the website, like we do other minutes, because people don't necessarily know what it is once it's been declassified.
Your worship, to council, that'll be possible when we declassify just minutes, but if we declassify portions of minutes, that could be difficult, but I'll see what I can do.
Cut and paste. Take it out of the original Word document.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay, that'll be great. Then I have a few follow-up questions and some of these are going to become regular council meeting follow-up questions. They've kind of already become that, but I am still, this is a question through to staff, still looking for the Columbia/Washington summary report and I'm just gonna keep bringing it up till we get it, just to keep it out there. I don't expect a date on it tonight, but it is something that I think is very important to us to know and also to the community to know. This is a question for the delegation bylaw committee that was supposed to meet last week and I'm just curious, did it meet?
No.
Okay, and is it planning to meet?
No, it's planned, but we've got a set of dates.
Okay. Right after we get the Columbia/Washington summary report? Let's see. Oh, and at the last meeting, we had made a motion to set up a subcommittee to examine the procurement policy and I'm wondering if staff has been named to join that committee? Have we had any staff?
Your worship, no.
Okay, that's okay. And then, this one, we talked about doing our, you know, our strategic planning and 2014 budget in June and I'm hoping that we can do that early in June. I know as the summer goes on, there'll be a bunch of traveling and so the, sooner the better on that would be my vote. I'd love to get a date for that in the calendar. And then, in February, I think, we had a COW on Cook Avenue and we had asked a number of questions. We were supposed to get a staff report and I asked about that in March too, about the staff report for that. And we still haven't had that and I'm just wondering, has that project gone away? Yeah.
No, your worship, it hasn't. I'd like to, to comment, to your worship, that staff has started working on the conflict. We worked on it half a day Friday. It will form a monthly part of your information package so that you will get the status of what staff is working on on every Tuesday.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Okay, then the other thing was the thing that's been in the press and it's talking about the amalgamation issues with Trail and Area A. And I just think that's something, maybe not tonight, but some point that this council should be talking about and get our position on that concept. So that's it. Thank you.
We, we received a letter from Rosland Figure Skating Club. They want a letter of support from council for application for a BC gaming grant for $20,000 to help support its skating coaching program. Like a motion, a, a resolution, need a resolution on that? Counsel More? Counsel Wallace, second. Any discussion on that?
It's a letter of support, that's all there is.
Just a, just a letter of support, yeah, they're applying for $20,000 for the BC gaming grant. Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie? Museum, they received the grant to hire a student for a, their info center for the summer. For July and August, they're gonna be having a student up there, so they fired two other students that are gonna be working as a guide and one, well, they're both gonna be as guides, so they fired, this'll make three students they will have hired this year, so. Other than that, it's about her. Press meeting is gonna be closed, closed, so we have to adjourn this, right?
Your worship, I need a resolution to close the meeting?
Wait, a motion to close, close the meeting?
Public Pursuit of the Community Charge, section 91K, which is an association.
I missed that part. Okay. Oh, counsel, motion by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Wallace. All in favor? Carrie?
Carrie?
Go down that far.